Trish Strofschey, Director of IT Development, IT Department. We have Matt Kachon assisting with tech support. Tyler Kenny assisting with tech support. And we also have Cynthia Walsh, Tom Meeting Rep from Precinct 2, and Phyllis Keller from, uh, Tom Meeting Rep from Precinct 2. We got, because they're here because they don't have Wi-Fi access at their homes, uh, decent Wi-Fi access. I would also say that we are gonna take attendance in a few minutes, but any Tom Meeting reps that you know come in late, and I'll make this announcement a little later. If they do come in late and miss the attendance, they need to send a private chat to their precinct chair to let them know, um, that they are present this evening. Now, just a reminder, only panelists who are Tom Meeting reps will be able to vote. And Tom Meeting reps, we can see the poll again. You have 25 seconds to vote. Now, in order to provide documentation for our quorum for our town clerk, we're gonna put the poll, and I ask you to, uh, vote presence. So if, Trish, you can bring up the poll, I appreciate it. You see before you the poll, you have 25 seconds to vote?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, it says post and panelists cannot vote.
You're not able to vote? Stand by, please, we'll have that resolved in a couple of minutes. Just stand by. Okay, what's that, Trish, are we relaunching? Okay, IT Department has relaunched the poll. Please begin voting again, let us know if there's any difficulties. Everybody's good? Thank you, please vote.
Mr. Moderator, I don't have a poll showing up on my screen.
Okay, Karen Clip, Precinct 6?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me mention the IT Department. Karen Clip and Roberta Hockback have no poll. Karen, did Karen Clip, can you move your screen around? Anything hiding the poll?
Karen, can you try to call the help desk for us so we can walk you through that? I'm wondering if maybe your poll is in a screen behind what you're looking at? Thank you.
Yes, it's in the poll.
Hey, uh-
Rick Hill?
Yeah, thank you, Bob. I, uh, I voted, I put the wrong precinct then, I put in one, I should've put in two.
All right, you're gonna have merit tonight, Rick. No, it's okay, Rick, we'll, we'll make that note, thank you for letting us know.
Yeah, if I tell Anita we gotta move, I'm in trouble.
Thank you, Rick. All right, we into the poll, and, I'm sorry. Can we just show the numbers, Trish? Our clerk does not have the numbers. Trish, Stephanie's still waiting for the numbers, if you can show that on the screen. Roberta Hockback has no poll, can we make note what precinct she's in? Okay, David Walsh, Precinct 2, reminded me for clarity, reps cannot chat directly to the precinct chair, they have to chat with all. Understood, thank you, David. All right, um, someone is online, Pat Colburn tells me someone's appearing as anonymous, do we see that? Stand by, please, we just have a couple of technical issues. All right, thank you, Pat. Okay, Pat Colburn, Precinct 4, said why is someone appearing as anonymous? I'm just reading a couple of these, Eric Coleman responded he was anonymous for some of his Q and A.
Oh, okay.
So that should clear that up. Okay, thank you, Pat Colburn. All right, I think we're, I'm gonna ask the town clerk, do we share the results? You got the numbers, town clerk?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna ask Stephanie Carrara to read the results of the poll. Go ahead, Stephanie.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Precinct 1, we have 12. Precinct 2, we have 16. Precinct 3, we have 19. Precinct 4, we have 15. Precinct 5, we have 16. Precinct 6, we have 15. Precinct 7, we have 10. And Precinct 8, we have 15, for a total of 118 representatives. Yes.
Stephanie, can you remind Tom Meeting reps what the forum is?
Quorum is 85.
All right, we have 118 Tom Meeting reps present, we meet our quorum. We can proceed now, thank you all for voting. Just a couple of reminders, procedural motions are still in effect. Uh, if you have any questions on procedural motions, just check the virtual table. I just wanna remind Tom Meeting reps, uh, if you wanna speak on an article, raise your hand, we will get to you. And the screen to show the hands will be up, those people online will, uh, be shown once we start going on the articles. Q and A is used for points of order. Please remember, any information on the chat that you put on the chat within the Zoom webinar is part of the record. And I always like to remind everybody, please be kind to your moderator because I can read some of those notes and just, you know, just be nice if you can. All right, um, town clerk, would you like to make Stephanie any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanna remind everybody, don't forget to pull your town meeting rep papers, we have them available. I will be confirming everything tomorrow night with the Board of Selectmen or Select Board, whichever you call them, uh, so that everyone will get the final look. And, um, everything should be, uh, finished by December 31st. So if you wanna wait until after that, that's fine, but we have them available, please don't forget to pull them, they have to be back in our office by February 15th at 5 o'clock. Thank you.
Stephanie, uh, next up, can we bring in Becca Moxton, Vice Chair of the Charter Review Committee? She has an announcement. Becca, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, and, uh, feel free to make your announcement.
I'm Becca Marksen, Precinct 7, uh, Vice Chair of Charter Review. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just wanted to announce that the next Charter Review Committee meeting is scheduled for January 6th, 2022, at 7:00 PM.
Thank you, Becca. All right, now we can revert to the order of business. All right, now we completed on Wednesday up through Article 6. Tonight, we'll start with Article 7, that appears on page 203 of your warrant books. And for Article 7, if we can have Vaughn Anokian, Chair of the FinCom, read the motion, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, proposed motion. Uh, the motion is that the town vote to pay the bills below by transferring the following sums, $496.67 from the FY 2022 Department of Public Works budgeted expenses for all public works departmental bills, $2,540.62 from the FY 22 library budgeted expenses for the library department bill, and 78 cents from the FY 22 recreation budgeted expenses for the recreation department bill. Do you want me to read the list here, or do you want me to say as noted in the warrant?
As noted in the warrant.
Okay, as noted in the warrant.
And who seconded that?
Lou Gito.
Thank you, Lou.
Thank you, Lou.
Motion was made by Vaughn Anokian, seconded by Lou Gito. Uh, before we move on, I have two hands raised. I believe there might be points of order. Uh, can we first hear from Peter Ventresko? Can we bring in Peter Ventresko? Peter, when you're brought in, please state your name, precinct number, and your point of order, please. Can I keep her muted, just unmute yourself?
I just did, I guess, okay. I've been trying to get in here to let-
Peter, Peter, hang on, name and precinct number, please.
Peter Ventresko, Precinct 8.
Go ahead, Peter.
Been trying to get in to let the, uh, Precinct 8 Chair know that I was trying to get in, but I couldn't get in. So I guess I'm in then, if I'm talking to you.
Are you okay now getting in, obviously?
Well, yeah, you let me in. All right, I'll lower my hand.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, if you have any problems, Peter, you can always, uh, bring it to our attention again. Next up is Robert Kramer. Mr. Kramer, when you are brought in, please state your name, precinct number, and your point of order.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
Okay, thank you very much, Bob, no problem. We're gonna move on. All right, we left off on Article 7. Anokian, Chair of the Finance Committee, could you read the recommendation, please?
The Finance Committee voted 15 to 0 to recommend approval of this article, with funding coming from the respective departments.
Thank you, Mr. Anokian.
Thank you.
All right, this time, can we hear from Bill Rowe? Or Dr. Graham, whoever would like to present on this.
I would defer to Bill, uh, he knows the status of these specifically.
Thank you, Dr. Graham, Bill Rowe, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, good evening, members. Um, so every year, we, um, usually have a few unencumbered bills that the department, uh, departments might have been unaware of, so that come in under the law, after the, they come in after the books are closed. They have to be voted by, um, town meeting. And I believe, since this is a special town meeting, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Moderator, but it's a nine tenths vote?
Am I correct, sir?
Um, just on the, there was, um, on the virtual table, I did send a revised bill from the Holbrook Police Department. The original bill was made out to the contractor. But for this particular bill, uh, this particular contract, the town agreed to pick up the police details. So the revised bill is on the, uh, virtual table, in case anybody had any question as to why it was made out to the contract. Um, that's about all I have, Mr. Moderator, be happy to entertain any questions.
Well, could you just, uh, elaborate, the Public Works, uh, Holbrook Police Department, is that amount different than what's in the original motion?
No, it is not. Same amount, just a different, uh, different customer on the bill. The original bill had the contractor's name, and it's, uh, the revised bill which is on the virtual table has Stoughton DPW.
Okay. Bill Rowe, that, that bill also appears, appears on page 206 in the warrant, is that correct? Small amount, I just wanna get clarification on that.
Yeah, let me bring it up here, uh... The screen is frozen. Okay. I believe all the bills are displayed there. It's probably the first, the first one. I'm trying to reconnect, Mr. Moderator.
Bill?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay, so we're just saying on page 6 of the warrant book, is that the same bill that we posted on the virtual table, or is that different?
I have my warrant book online.
Okay.
Just trying to bring it up here.
And then make this with town council, are we okay with that? Same amount? The amount is the same.
The amount is the same, yes.
I'm gonna have town council weigh in just for a moment.
Yep.
Point of information, Mr. Moderator.
Is that, Mr. Gito, could you state your name and precinct number, please?
Precinct for Lou Gito. Uh, it might be nice to know that that is the Holbrook Police Department for $204, is that the correct thing that we're looking at?
Yes. Is that correct, Bill?
Maybe if we were to say that, it would be easier for us.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gito, we're just, obviously, coming pages back and forth here, we'll get that corrected. Holbrook, but I'm gonna have town clerk play in for a moment, go ahead, great.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, so the issue here is that in, on page 206 of your warrant book, um, the Public Works Holbrook Police Department bill is made out to LAL Construction in the amount of $204. On the virtual table, there's a different invoice which is made out to the Stoughton Department of Public Works, but it's still from the town of Holbrook, and it's still in the amount of $204. So, um, there's no reason to have to amend this or anything like that. Um, it's just a point of information, um, that the title of the invoice has changed, everything else is the same.
You town council, all right.
Correct.
Mark, do I see a couple of names up here? They points of information, could I get, all right.
Mr. Moderator.
Is there a point of information, George?
Uh, just a correction, Mr. Moderator, George Dolinsky, Precinct 2, you can't, total on this screen is 308, 303807. You crossed off the $85 bill for Island Street Automotive, the total should be 2950307. You took off $85, according to the screen. What's the correct number?
Let me, let me ask Bill Rowe to take a look at that.
Look at the screen.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of why Island Street Automotive was, uh, I did see that as well, I don't, I'm not aware as to why it was crossed out.
Yeah, we don't know why it's crossed out, I think that's just a, uh, an error on the computer system. Uh, I want, I'd like to go first to-
We had no notice of anything that indicated that was gone.
Okay, no, it could be just some type of computer glitch.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, John Inzavino, Precinct 4. Just so you know, in, in the book, that is not crossed off.
Yeah, okay, IT is trying to remove that line. Thank you, Mr. Inzavino, thank you, Dr. Graham. I need to, Jim, Jim Garron, when you have a chance. And Jim, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please. Unmute yourself, state your name and precinct number, please.
I can't. Jim, Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Jim, head, name and precinct number.
Uh, Jim Garron, Precinct 6. Uh, Mr. Moderator, in the printed warrant, this, uh, this, uh, bill from National Grid for $6,651.87, is that no longer valid, uh, valid?
Rowe, could you address that issue? What page is that on, Jim? Page 209?
The only, the only National Grid bill I see is 2,000, uh, well, 2,540, and then a 78 cent, and a $9.67 cent. I don't see one for 5,000 or 6,000.
In, in my printed warrant, it's, uh, on page 209.
Yeah, Dr. Graham, there's a-
Oh, okay, and, oh, in the back-
Mr. Moderator.
Well, hang on, everybody, okay, hang on, let's get some clarity here. Bill Rowe, I'd just like to have Bill Rowe-
Okay, so the only thing that's owed on this particular bill are the current charges, We only pay bills that have the current, we only pay the current charges on an invoice, we don't pay previous balances.
So the printed invoice is no longer valid?
No, no, it's valid, it's, uh, you'll see under current charges, 2,540.62.
Thank you.
I see what you're saying, okay.
That $204 from the Holbrook Police Department, do we know that LAL did not pay that bill?
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Garron, under that particular contract, uh, Holbrook Police were unaware at the time, but the town agreed to pick up the details on that contract.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe, thank you, Mr. Moderator.
You're welcome.
You're welcome, Mr. Garron. Pat Colburn, can we bring in Pat Colburn before we get, I see some other hands up there, but I wanna get to Pat Colburn. Pat, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Pat Colburn, Precinct 4, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, if you can answer this without getting into anybody's business, and I do not wanna get into anybody's business, I'm just curious why we paid two medical bills for Care Central out of the line item, as opposed to through medical insurance?
All right, Dr. Graham, uh, Bill Rowe, can we answer that?
Uh, traditionally, the, um, Public Works has picked up the, uh, cost of physicals.
That's in their, that's in their budget, Bill?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, thank you, I didn't notice it, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, next, John Inzavino, can we bring in John Inzavino? Now, John, you're on the panel, right, so?
Yes, yes, thank you, Bob.
Name and precinct number again.
Yep, John Inzavino, Precinct 4. Uh, just two quick questions, actually, now that, uh, the invoice on the virtual table, uh, is dated December 20th of 2019, and it lists the, uh, amount of $204 for a total of 204, the, for the invoice, but then it lists a payment of 408 underneath it. Can, can somebody explain that?
I can, Mr. Moderator.
Hi, Mr. Rowe.
Yeah, I did place the call to the, um, administrative officer at the Holbrook Police Department, and she explained to me that that is the way their system prints out. It's almost like a statement invoice, that you do, well, it will, uh, print the invoice, then it will, uh, print any previously applied payments during a certain period. But we still, we do all the two, we do all the 204.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rowe. And the only other question I had, um, it, well, actually, on, on the, uh, under the motion, when it says the proposed funding source, it just says FY 22 line, and it doesn't really give anything. So is that something that we don't need because of the way the motion was written? That it's just gonna come out of the budget somewhere?
Yeah, I think, I think the motion specified, uh, the funding sources.
But, yeah, it just says out of the budgeted expenses.
I noticed that, yeah, um, so-
So the, the chart is irrelevant, then, as far as the, what line it's coming from?
Well, yeah, the chart should be interpreted to, would come from the corresponding department for that particular line.
I'm gonna ask you both to go through, Mr. Moderator, just so I can have a little more control of this, we're going back and forth, and, um-
Sorry.
So are we all set, John?
The only other question I, I have for, for Bill is, we do this every year, so how do we have bills still going back to 2019 and 2020? We go through this every year. Are these bills that just get lost somewhere and all of a sudden show up?
Bill, could you answer that?
Uh, no, I don't, I don't, I don't think so, Mr. Inzavino, I, I think, John, I think, um, I think it's mostly with the vendors, honestly. Um, it could be that, you know, it could be the utility bill came in and got skipped, that's possible.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator? I don't really know.
Who's asking?
All right, all right, thank, thank you, Mr. Moderator, thank you, Mr. Rowe. That, that's it for me, Bob.
I recognize Scott Carraro, go ahead, Scott, name and precinct number.
Scott Carraro, Precinct 2. Some of those, some of those bills have to do with COVID and, and lack of staff in some of those, uh, businesses that things were getting looked over or not handled in a proper time. So it, it isn't a problem with our staff, some of it had to do with vendors not being fully staffed, too. Don't forget, it was, things were shut down. We might have been functioning, but other places were shut down.
Okay, thank you, Scott, you all set?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you for that explanation. All right, anybody else? Hate to get bogged down on this, uh, Article 7, but just wanna make sure that Tom Meeting reps get their questions answered. Uh, Bill, could you just kinda summarize the final amount we're paying?
Sure, sure, um, so it's, uh, $3,038.07. Um, will come from the various departments, 2022 budget. Uh, the mechanics of how it works is we reduce their budget by, uh, the applicable dollar amounts, transfer that amount into an article, and then we pay the bills out of that article. So, and again, we, uh, we, we put in, uh, purchase orders when the product is ordered to, um, encumber the money. But unfortunately, sometimes we, bills that come in and they're not encumbered, they don't, uh, you know, so they, they have to go to town meeting.
Okay, thank you very much, Bill Rowe. Uh, just a reminder to the Tom Meeting reps, for a special Tom meeting, the vote required to pass this article is nine tenths, and an annual Tom meeting, by state law, would be four fifths. Because this is a special Tom meeting, it just happens to be nine tenths. All right, I don't see any more questions or raised hands. I'd like to, uh, Mr. Zamanian, do you have your hand up?
Uh, yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you.
Name and precinct number, please.
Uh, Mark Zamanian, Precinct 1. Um, just wanna clarify, so this vote would have to pass by 90%, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, nine tenths or 90% of those people voting, extensions do not count.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Was there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Lou Gito did.
With Carolyn? Yes, I think Lou Gito, Mr. Gito did, so it was a second.
Yeah.
All right, are we ready to vote? I wonder if I can see someone else Q and A. Coleman? Okay, second, was a second by Mr. Gito, Precinct 4. All right, I like to keep moving if we can, I will stop if someone raises their hand. I see votes being raised, so let's vote, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor of this article, please vote accordingly, vote yes or no, or abstain. You have 25 seconds. Okay, time is expired, can we end the poll and show the results, please? And then the town clerk will read the results once she has it on her screen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The vote is 123 yes, 2 no's, 0 abstentions.
Vote passes by nine tenths, 123.
As I stated, the vote, uh, the motion passes, 123 yes, 2 no's, 0 abstentions. It passes by, obviously, greater than nine tenths, 90%.
98.
90, to be exact. Thank you, Mr. Zamanian. Let's move on, hang on one minute, Mr. Zamanian. All right, go ahead, Mr. Zamanian, do you have a question?
Yeah, I would ask that you recognize Joe McCrisky, who was asked to be recognized, uh, as a personal privilege.
The moderator will recognize, uh, Joseph McCrisky for appointing a personal privilege. Go ahead, uh, Joe, go ahead, identify yourself, please.
Uh, Joe McCrisky, Chair of the Board of Selectmen, Precinct 5. Mr. Moderator, thank you for recognizing me out of order. Uh, this was just a general comment to town meeting representatives. Uh, there has been, um, some people, I guess, maybe interested in reconsideration of one or more articles at the end of the meeting, so that on behalf of the, my colleagues on- So that on behalf of the, my colleagues on the Select Board, I would ask that everybody please make an attempt to stay right till the end of the meeting so that your vote can be counted. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, thank you, Mr. McCrisky. All right, we're moving on. Article eight, that appears on page two seventeen. Article eight, Dr. Grimm, did you have something to say about this article?
I lost my button. They have my mute button. This was, so this was an expense in the middle of the year, Southeast Regional adjusted their billing, so that our, our costs went up about sixty-four thousand dollars. We had originally presented this in front of Finance Committee. There were questions on funding sources. Effectively, this is going to happen as a May budget transfer and does not need to be on the warrant this evening. Bill Rowe has spoken with representatives from Southeast Regional and Treasurer Paula Newt, and we will continue to make payments as we can with what we have in the budget right through, and then we'll do a line item transfer in May with FinCom. Thank you.
All right, are you going to move to dismiss?
I move to dismiss.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Since we had an explanation of that dismissal, don't believe there's any need to discuss this. If we can have the poll put up. All right, the poll is before you. Please vote accordingly. Twenty-five seconds. And just for FYI to everybody, since the article eight is being dismissed, I didn't ask the different committees to read their, their votes on it. Because it's being dismissed. Okay, time is expired. Please end the poll and share the results, please. And once the town clerk has the results, please read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The vote is on Article eight, yes, one twenty, no, two, zero abstentions.
All right, motion on Article eight passes to dismiss it, one twenty, yes, two noes, zero abstentions. I declare that a vote. Thank you. Moving on. Article nine, Article nine appears on page two twenty of your warrants. Page two twenty of your warrant book. Okay, Dr. Grimm?
So Article nine was a reauthorization of expenditures. As it turns out, we really don't need this on here, so it will be a motion to dismiss this. Police Chief had already started using her funds appropriately and accordingly within the number of years allocated. And the sunset on the other one can either be reapproved in May or actually because of the fact that one town meeting does not bind the next, it may not even need a reapproval. So we'll reevaluate that and come back if we need to, but at this point, a motion to dismiss.
Thank you, Dr. Grimm. Cynthia Walsh seconded that from precinct two.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Is that Mr. Jito?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Jito.
I, I put in detailed article for why I wanted the point of order on the table. If you would like me to go beyond that, I just wanted to say that I take no joy in bringing the point of order forward. But the town moderator and the precinct chairs of precincts one, two, three, and six took away the rights granted to Board of Selectmen.
This is out of order, Mr. Moderator.
Article nine. No, it's not, Mr. Chairman. It's, a fact of the matter is that, that there was an illegal or an inappropriate action taken by.
Okay, hold on.
Inappropriate. I'm sorry, I, I corrected myself.
All right, hold on, everybody. Mr. Jito, just hold on. Can we just let the gentleman speak and?
No, it wasn't illegal. It was just.
That's right, it was not illegal.
I wasn't, I, I.
That's okay.
Incorrect. I don't want to go into detail. I think that anybody should read that point of order. I've never seen the, an article not come before the town meeting that was proposed by either a petitioner or the, the Board of Selectmen, the only two groups that can that can bring articles before town meeting.
Mr. Jito, can I interrupt you for one minute?
You may.
Okay, if I could just ask everybody of the town meeting reps, just if you could read Mr. Jito's point of order on the virtual table. He made a clear statement on that. Can we end that there, Mr. Jito? Otherwise, other people want to bring up points of orders and.
No, that, I, I am happy to, to just bring that point up and to make it, make it clear that, that that action took place and should not occur.
Okay.
That's it. I'm done.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Jito. We're going to move on.
Point of order. You opened the door.
I didn't open the door. That was a point of order, gentlemen. I'm not going to debate this back and forth. Am I the discretion of? Moderator, I have the discretion. We're moving forward.
Point of order on the table.
I'm talking to Town Council. Can I move forward, Town Council?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, you may move forward.
On the master of laws, I'm making, using my discretion, I am moving forward. All right, thank you. Article nine has been a motion to dismiss. It was seconded by Cynthia Walsh. All right. We're going to poll. Since it was a good, clear discussion by Dr. Grimm, at least an explanation of why it's being dismissed. The poll is before you. Please vote accordingly. Yes, no, or abstain. All right, time has expired. Please close the poll, end the poll, and share the results. And once the numbers have been shown to the town clerk, town clerk, please read the results of the poll. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On Article nine, it was yes, one thirteen, no, five, abstentions, four.
Motion to dismiss Article nine has passed. Yes, one thirteen, no, five, abstentions, four. The moderator declares that a vote. We're going to move on. All right, we're on to Article ten, Affordable Housing Trust. That appears in your warrant books on page two twenty-three. If I can have Juan Anokian, Chair of the Finance Committee, read the motion?
That the town vote to accept provisions of General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-five C, and create a municipal affordable housing trust fund, and to amend Division one, Part one of the general bylaws by adding a new Chapter fifteen entitled Stoughton Municipal Affordable Housing Trust Fund in the form set forth in Article ten, Appendix one, and further to authorize the Select Board to file with the General Court special legislation to address the passing of the trust's non-financial assets to the Housing Authority at such time as the trust is dissolved, all as set forth in Article ten, Appendix two of the warrant.
There a second?
Second, Mark Zemanian.
Juan Anokian, can you read the Finance Committee report, please?
Finance Committee voted fifteen to zero to recommend approval of this article.
Intergovernmental Relations, Agavon Shoemaker, could you read the report, please?
Committee voted yes for, no three, to recommend this meeting to town articles, this article to town meeting.
Thank you very much, Agavon. Municipal Operations, Cynthia Walsh, could you read the report, please?
Municipal Operations Committee voted three to two to recommend approval to town meeting.
Thank you. Municipal Regulations, Carolyn Campbell, could you read the report, please?
Municipal Regulations Committee voted forty to zero to recommend the course of town meeting.
Thank you all for reading those reports. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to move on for the presentation. Mark Zemanian, could you present your discussion on this?
I, I will. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am looking for Barry Kessler, who will be putting up a presentation tonight. Barry, are you with us?
I'm here.
Thank you.
Just got unmuted myself.
Okay, while he's doing that, Mr. Moderator, I'll get, Moderator, I'll get started if you're okay. Thank you, Mr. Moderator and town meeting representatives. My name is Mark Zemanian. I am Chair of the Housing Subcommittee that the CPC put together to do two things. The first or primary focus was the COVID Relief Fund, which you, as town meeting reps, voted overwhelmingly to approve twice, one in May of twenty twenty, I'm sorry, June of twenty twenty, in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars to provide relief to our residents, and again, in May of twenty twenty-one, to add an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to that fund to, again, assist our residents here in Stoughton that were affected by the pandemic. During our time working with the COVID Relief Fund, the committee, which consisted of myself, Mr. Michael Barrett, who at the time was a resident appointee, is now on the Community Preservation Committee, Mr. Joe Scardino from the Planning Board, who was also on the CPC, and now Mr. Carrera, a town Select Board member, and Michael Haran, who is on the Housing Authority, all recognized the need for to do something more for the community. We hear a great deal about senior housing. So back in, oh, I think it was about March or April of twenty twenty-one, we went to the CPC and requested that we be allowed to refocus our efforts to design and create legislation based on Massachusetts statute for an Affordable Housing Trust, and that's what you have before you tonight. At this point in time, I'd like to introduce Michael Barrett, who's going to be speaking about why an Affordable Housing Trust is a benefit to our community here in Stoughton. Michael, are you with us? Michael Barrett?
Can we bring in Michael Barrett?
Am I unmuted?
You are.
Am I there?
Yep, you're here, Michael.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mark, and thank you, members of town meeting, for allowing me to come before you to present our case. Mark kind of outlined where we came from. Back in early twenty twenty, we, we formed a Subcommittee of the CPC, and we managed to put together a program that I'm very proud of, that I think was very beneficial to our fellow residents in Stoughton. I, I think if you go back and look at that program versus what other cities and towns and states and the federal government accomplished, we should all feel very proud of what we were able to accomplish. Throughout the process of putting together that program, I think we all had in the back of our minds the longer term goal that we really need a more permanent solution to bring some benefits to the town. As part of the documentation that you all received for tonight, there's a great little FAQ, frequently asked questions. I'm not going to go through the entire thing, but certainly we attempted to focus on some of the benefits that would bring. As I thought about what I wanted to say tonight, one of the things that came to my mind, I've lived here in Stoughton for thirty-six years, and one of the reasons I ended up in Stoughton is it was, it was a very affordable community. It fit within the budget I had back in nineteen eighty-five to buy a house, and I'm still here. And as I look ahead as to where my kids and, and the cost of housing today and where they need to be, when I think back, as Mark said, I'm currently a member of the CPC, but I served a prior term on the CPC as well, and I listened to a lot of proposals and heard a lot of good discussion about the need for housing solutions in the town of Stoughton, which is certainly not unique to the town of Stoughton. They, we see it throughout the state and indeed throughout the country. The cost of housing is going through the roof, and we need to deal with that, whether it be for the first time homeowners who can't afford the current cost of housing, or as Mark, I think, mentioned, some of our senior residents who may want to downsize and move to another house, but the pricing of everything is just thrown it into such a loop that it doesn't work for them. We were able, in relatively short term, in twenty twenty, to put together a program, and again, as Mark said, I thank town meeting for doing that for us and agreeing with us that it was needed and helpful. But I think in the long term, we recognize that a more permanent solution and a tool for the community to keep us in a great spot. I mean, we're fortunate as a community that we're above the ten percent threshold to have some say in what's going on housing-wise in our community, but that may not stay in and of and by itself. I think we need to be very proactive to do so. And I think we saw the solution, a solution, a tool in our toolbox for the town management and for the Board of Selectmen, is to have an Affordable Housing Trust. I mean, the first and foremost reason to provide housing to residents who need it includes the lifelong residents who tend to be older and have grown children and want to downsize, as well as those first time homeowners. I think, again, to reiterate, the need to be proactive, deserving and creating affordable housing takes time. I mean, it's a ten or fifteen year process. We were, we were, I think, very productive in twenty twenty. We got something done in short order. Town meeting agreed with us. It happened. But as we think about the future, this is not a one-time, three-month, four-month project, one and done. We need to think about the next ten or fifteen years. An Affordable Housing Trust is an organization that can help us get there. So Mark had asked me to sort of reiterate some of those feelings. I feel very strongly about it. One of the biggest benefits of the trust is the ability to be funded through a variety of sources. As I said, I had been on the CPC before, and although a number of good housing projects came to the CPC, most of them tended to fall through. The ability for the CPC or for the Board of Selectmen or for town management to react quickly to things that might come up that would be good solutions to housing, it's just very difficult in the form of government. A housing trust is set up specifically to handle these things to be very flexible, to take this money and to put it to good use for the town. So I'm here tonight to ask you to vote in favor of what we want to do. Mark mentioned some of the members of the committee. It was a great committee to work on. I'm proud of the work we did. And, and I hope that you see it the same way, because I think it will truly benefit the town of Stoughton. And that's it, Mark.
Thank you so much for your, your speech, and, and if, if I could, I'd like to bring Joe Scardino, who is also a member of the Subcommittee in, and Scott, I do see your hand up. Did you want to pop in real quick or? Before Joe talks?
Yeah, Mark, it would be, it's just a quick statement.
Please.
This, this is something easy for everybody to understand. The key to this housing trust, which these gentlemen did a lot of the work. I came in on the very end. I got brought up to speed. It's, it, it appeared to me to be something that is overwhelmingly good for this town. It's, it's a fit that we need. And the key is Stoughton will control it. We'll be the drivers, not waiting to see, oh, God, what shoe's going to fall. We'll be able to work properly with a builder or whoever wants to get on board, and, and we can get what we need and what residents would want, and everybody would have a chance to speak in on it. But this, this is a very good thing. I was proud to be part of it, and I was proud to be with these, these gentlemen because, and Barry Kessler, what a great job. I mean, and Mark, deep down, you got to understand, these guys did a lot, a lot of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Joe Scardino, were you ready to talk about what some of the committees we touched? Joe?
Can we bring in Joe Scott, Scott, please?
Hello?
Yep, you're here, Joe. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Those, those remarks were a good segue into what I'm going to talk about. The members of town meeting, I'm very pleased to represent this evening such a hardworking committee, which met twelve times during which resulted in the drafting of a mission statement, a policy and project scope, a bylaw to the town code, a fact sheet, an article and motion for town meeting, and multiple revisions to a special act to preserve the limitation of funding only for housing upon the dissolution of the trust to be utilized for the intended purpose of housing, affordable housing in Stoughton. And any funds left, by having any funds remaining after reimbursing the CPC, go to the Stoughton Housing Authority. On the later document, we developed language which the. On the later document, we developed language, which the committee worked diligently on, productively together, as well as independently, reviewing with and working side by side with Town Council to produce these documents for your approval. In addition, outreach was made in the form of presentations to CPC, the Planning Board, the Stoughton Housing Authority, the SRA, who not only gave anonymous approval, but provided letters of endorsement. Moreover, presentations were also made to the standing committees, such as FinCom, Municipal Ops, Municipal Regs, Intergovernmental Relations, all of which supported by a majority of its members, this initiative. Letter support were also submitted by the Town Planner and the Select Board and the Town Manager. The initiative also received an endorsement by an affidavit of OCPC official Donna Dottie Folgenetti. A public forum was held virtually for members of the public to become informed about the project. A presentation was made by the Chair, Mark Semenian, to the Select Board on September 21st, where he received unanimous support for the project. We ask you to join with our fellow citizens, who have already lent their enthusiastic support to this initiative, and pass this article. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Joe. And I'd like Barry Kessler, who has been instrumental in keeping this committee moving forward, to say a few brief words and wrap up. Barry?
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Town Meeting Representatives. Thank you for the support you've shown so far, and I hope you continue that support tonight. One of the most important things that we talked about, putting the bylaw together, putting the housing trust together, was we want to be able to provide housing for seniors, we want to be able to provide housing for first-time homebuyers, and those are two groups that are having a tough time right now. In Stoughton, the average price of a home is over $400,000, and that's beyond the reach of a lot of people. One of the other things we want to do is make sure that we spur economic development. People tend to buy and shop where they live, and if they can't afford to live in Stoughton, then they're less likely to buy in Stoughton and grease the wheels of the economic engine that Stoughton has. I don't want to take up too much of your town, too much of your time. I look forward to any questions that anyone might have, and I'm going to hand it back to Mark right now.
Thank you, Barry. Mr. Moderator, we are closing our presentation and would welcome any questions or comments at this time.
Okay, thank you, Mark Semenian, and thank you all, Michael Barrett, Scott Carrillo, Joe Scardino, Barry Kessler, for your comments and the presentation. All right, at this point, I'm, motion's been made, it's been discussed, presented, now it's time for questions. And again, like I mentioned on last Wednesday evening, I'm combining the technical questions, pro and con debate, all into one, so we just keep this evening moving forward. All right. First up, I see on the list here is Roberta Haback. Can we please bring in Roberta Haback? Roberta, when you're brought in, please state your name, precinct number, and then you have the floor for up to five minutes. Go ahead, Roberta.
Roberta Haback, Precinct 8. I just want everybody to be aware that this trust is fear housing. This does not guarantee anything for the seniors in Stoughton or any residents in the town of Stoughton. This is a lottery system. If you want senior housing for Stoughton seniors, you don't need this type of trust. Right now, the town does have a lot of town-owned parcels, which the CPC or the housing end of the CPC could see about acquiring them, working with the developer, and turning them into affordable housing, maybe giving them some money off or something to that effect. It's the affordable housing units, the senior housing units in this town have fallen off. I live right down the street from Lucivita Court. It's probably 50-something years old. It's not for seniors. It hasn't been for seniors for years, not to say seniors can't live there, but it's fear housing, and I know that's with a lot of other of these housing units in the town. Right now, our affordable housing are better known as 40Bs. We're at 13%. I remember a time not too long ago that everybody was complaining about how many 40Bs we have in this town. So maybe this is just a nicer word to use, affordable housing, but let me just say, this does not support anything for anybody in the town of Stoughton. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, could I respond to some of those, those comments?
I'm with me, obviously.
Thank you, Roberta. I just want to make sure the moderator is okay with that.
Yes, I had a technical issue. I'm back. All right, next up is Reggie Nunley. Can we bring in Mr. Reggie Nunley?
Mr. Moderator, I wondered, could I just respond to some of those comments? Okay, fair enough.
Up to the end, you have a five-minute summary at the end. Reggie Nunley, if we can bring in Mr. Nunley. Reggie, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number. Thank you. We're trying to get the list of raised hands on the screen, so you can see people in line to speak. That should be up momentarily.
Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes. Name and precinct number.
My name is Reggie Nunley. I am Precinct 1, and I was one of the people that wholeheartedly supported the concept. I think that the committee had done an excellent job in terms of its transparency and really going through all of the various committees, in doing a fine job in terms of putting the program together. This is a, a really forward-thinking concept for a long-term solution. As someone earlier indicated, that the housing in Stoughton is clearly going up, and some of those prices are going up, because folks understand that it is, it is clearly more affordable to live in Stoughton than it is to live in Boston. This is going to bring additional resources and developers that would come to help drive the economic engine here in the Stoughton area. I wholeheartedly encourage and urge town rep meetings to vote in approval for this Article 10. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nunley. Next up is Jeff Iverson. Can we bring in Mr. Iverson? When you're brought in, can you please state your name and precinct number, please, Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Iverson, Precinct 1. I'd like to ask one question before I make a statement.
Right ahead.
My question to you, Mr. Moderator, is, earlier it was mentioned that our housing stock was, affordable housing stock was 13%, and I just wanted to know if that could be confirmed or corrected by the presenters?
Do we have an answer to that, Mr. Semenian?
Sure, through you, Mr. Moderator. Our current housing stock percentages, we haven't gotten the official from the state, but somewhere in the areas of 11.54. Is that Joe Scardino, does that, or Barry? That sounds about right, 11.54, give or take. So 11.54%, Jeffrey?
Okay, at the lower end of the range.
Much lower, yes.
Mr. Moderator, I believe the Town Planner's on the, on the meeting. I would defer to the Town Planner.
Mr. Semenian, you want to hear, let's hear from the Town Planner, just to clarify the numbers. John Schabino, are you online? We're waiting for Mr. John Schabino. Unmute yourself, please, John. Go ahead.
I am. I'm muted. Hello?
Hello. You're on, John.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Joe. As of June of this year, our affordable housing inventory is at 12.04%.
Okay, thank you. So my statement on this is, you know, at 11.5, going up to 12%, I mean, the town of Stoughton seems to be doing pretty well with our, with our, you know, requirements to have a certain percentage of affordable housing. You know, this seems like a bit of additional bureaucracy to manage that number when, you know, we have, you know, plenty of developers coming through, trying to create additional housing in our market, which, you know, would contribute to the supply and demand of housing in our town and affect prices. I'm not really sure of the, or I'm not convinced of the need for, you know, something additional to the CPC scope in this manner. Thank you.
Mr. Iverson, next up is Dave Laurie. Can we bring in Mr. David Laurie? Dave, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. David Laurie, Precinct 6. I just want to preface by saying I will be voting in favor of this. It's, I think the positives have been represented earlier, so I'll just focus a little bit on where I do have some concerns, where if CPA sends money to the housing trust, and I believe Town Meeting has to approve that, that amount, that that money is not encumbered by any specific project. It would be kind of like, I'm going to use the word blank check, for lack of a better word, but it, it seems to me that the housing trust members would have control over funds that, that are taxpayer funds, you know, channeled through a CPA account. And I just have a little bit of a concern where tax funds are being appropriated for something that no one actually knows will actually be spent on. So that's, maybe that could be addressed, I don't know, but that's one of my concerns. The other is, I think it also got touched on with the housing stock. I mean, I don't really know how much developable land there is in the town. I mean, we have a lot of green, open spaces that are pretty much locked down as conservation properties. It is, it's not like we have a lot of buildable areas in town, so I'm not really sure how the housing trust is going to make an impact that way unless they repurpose properties that are already in need of help. So I'll wrap it up, Bob, by just saying I'm in favor because of the positives are very strong, but I do have some concerns, which over time I'm going to probably be keeping an eye on. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Laurie. We're going to move on. Denise Bronson, can we bring in Denise Bronson? I just want to, before you go on, Denise, everybody that's in line to speak will get to you unless the question's called. If you have a question, ask the question, stop, let Mark Semenian or one of the other speakers answer it. If you're going to keep talking, that's fine, but Mr. Semenian can provide the answer and the summary. All right, so just an effort of time here. Let's go on. Denise Bronson, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Denise Bronson, Precinct 1. How do you determine that people qualify for this?
Mr. Semenian, can you answer that one?
Sure, through you, Mr. Moderator, to Ms. Bronson. The Board of Trustees would set the parameters. You know, the thing, and we've heard a lot of talk tonight about, oh, this is a 40B in disguise, it, that has nothing to do with it. Affordable Housing Trust can do a number of different things, but if, in fact, a piece of property was developed or an affordable housing unit was created through the Board of Trustees, then the state actually has a system that we're required to follow. That system looks at one factor or one factor only, and that is the financial situation of the applicant. Due to the fact that this is a localized Affordable Housing Trust, the, I think, key for the Board of Trustees is going to be transparency to our community. That transparency alerts our community more immediately before we have to go through that process where we open it up to all. I, I believe it gives our residents an edge by having that transparency. There are many people that watch the meetings. I'm sure they'll watch these too, given how many of the questions I've heard tonight. Does that answer your question, Denise?
Yes. Would it be Stoughton residents or incoming Stoughton residents only?
Naturally, you would have to be a Stoughton resident if you were to receive the lottery. Yes, we'd only be focused on developing affordable housing in Stoughton. The law does not allow us to close the community Affordable Housing Trust to others, but again, through that transparency factor, it's going to be our residents that will hear about it first. I can't think of too many residents from Newton or Brighton that would be looking to, to get an affordable housing unit here in Stoughton, but it's certainly open to anybody who met the financial requirements that resides in Massachusetts.
All right, thank you very much.
Well, Denise?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next up is Paul Demuse. Paul, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Demuse, Precinct 3. My issue with this is we're using town resident CPC funds, but there is no actual preference for Stoughton residents, specifically seniors, and that's, that's the downfall I see here, because once the state's involved, anyone from anywhere in the state can apply or get in this, if it is a lottery. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Next up is Michael Hadman. Michael, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Okay. Michael Hadman, Precinct 8. My question is on the foreclosed properties. Are we going to buy these back and rent them to people again, or, and how are we going to maintain the properties that we own?
Mr. Semenian, if you can answer that?
Sure, through you, Mr. Moderator. So the, the article before you is to do a couple of things, one of which is to accept Massachusetts state law. The second part of it is the creation of the Affordable Housing Trust here in Stoughton, and the third part is the special act that allows us to bequeath the physical properties that are not earmarked for CPC funds to the Housing Authority, which is well-positioned to handle those things. But in answer to the question, we do have a, a policy and some recommendations set for a Board of Trustees, but our job was not to sort of pick projects, if you will, at this point, it was to create the, the legislation or the law. That is something that the Board of Trustees will decide what they would like to focus and priorities to be. So we haven't really looked at whether or not foreclosed properties, surely tax-taken properties by the town could be looked at, but we have not sat down and had that conversation with either the Town Manager, staff from Town Hall, or the Select Board as of yet. The, the conversations we've been having have been, do you support the, the process of setting this up? So we haven't really gotten there, Michael, is what I'm getting at.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Pat Holburn. Can we bring in Pat Holburn? And Pat, when you're, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Pat Holburn, Precinct 4. I guess I'm not sure that I understand this article at all. I thought it was one thing, and then as people started speaking, it seemed another thing. It seems as if there's no preference to Stoughton residents. So I do have a concern about CPC money going into an account that doesn't benefit a Stoughton resident, but I guess what I don't understand is, we, we talked earlier, somebody mentioned seniors who may want to downsize, and I'm not seeing how this helps. I think there's this general assumption that because you're a senior, there's very low income, but there are many seniors who own homes that they could probably sell for $500,000, but there's no, nothing you can buy for under $400,000. Does this help those people, or is this truly for bringing new people into Stoughton?
Let's see if I can get an answer for you. Mr. Semenian?
I'm happy to answer it, but I don't want everybody to hear from me. Michael, or Barry, or Joe, do you have any, do you want to chime in on some of this?
Can you hear me, Mark? Am I coming across?
Yes, indeed, Michael.
I think to answer that specific question, I mean, if we can work to make more affordable housing available within the community, it will be available to seniors. I mean, as several people have pointed out, there are limitations in the state and federal discrimination laws that say we can't make it available solely to Stoughton residents. Certainly would probably come down as our preference, particularly if we're using CPC money, but the idea of this trust is that we will have a tool available as a town that can take some money from the CPC, but can also, more importantly, maybe work with developers and attract outside funds. work with developers and attract outside funds to help develop affordable housing. And yes, that may mean bringing some people in that come from other towns, but if it's here and it's available to, to town residents, I mean, certainly we will try our best to make it, or the, the trust will be responsible for it. I say we. But, but legally, we can't restrict it to town residents. I mean, that is a true statement, but it doesn't mean it's not good for the town. That's the bottom line. It's, it's, this is a good thing for the town. Having more affordable housing available in the town is good for all of us. Mark, I'll let you add on.
If you could step in just for a moment, I know the question was raised about if somebody sells a house and they have a lot of assets, because they've sold their house, how would they qualify? It, it's, it's income based, and, and so that, I, I hopefully that answers that question. It's income based rather than asset based.
If I might, Mr. Moderator, a quick follow-up. Could you tell me what that income limit is?
It varies depending on the size of the family, but for example, on a typical, on a typical affordable housing project, a family of four could qualify even if their income is over $90,000. So it's, it's not just four people. It's, it's a pretty broad scope.
But I'm, I'm thinking in general, a senior would be just one or two people. What would that income be?
I don't have it right in front of me, but it's, it's, you know, they tend to be generous in terms of what qualifies. It's 80% of the area-wide median income. Although I don't have it in front of me, I do remember what it is for a four-person family. I don't have it for a single person. I can get that information for you.
Thank you. If, if I could just conclude, I, I guess I don't know how I'll vote on this. I, I can see why having affordable housing is helpful. I'm just not sure it will help the people in this town who need to get something more affordable than there is, but I'll, I'll be open as I listen. Thank you.
Next up is Dr. Glenn Tucker. Can we bring in Dr. Tucker? When you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please. Thank you.
Glenn Tucker, precinct eight. Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I have, hold on a second, please. I'm sorry, we have an echo.
No problem. Take your time.
Okay, sorry about that. We're, my wife and I are both town meeting members, and we're both logged in on different computers, so we're adequately represented. So through you, Mr. Moderator, I, I have a couple of questions and then comments, so I beg your indulgence if I'm back and forth a, a little bit here. One of the things I'm looking at in, in the, in the warrant is it says, it's on page 235, under Board of the Town, it says that the Board of, the, the Trust is a Board of the Town of Stoughton for the purposes of the Uniform Procurement Act, and it goes on with some other legalese there, but I'm not seeing where that is represented in the actual article that would be part of the actual legislation for the town. Am I missing that somewhere that I'm not seeing it? Like, uh, back further ahead on page 243? Can someone who familiar with this answer that question? Because this is something I'm concerned about with this here.
Just one minute, Dr. Tucker. We'll see if we get someone to answer that. Mr. Maney?
Sure. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So, Mr. Tucker, the bylaw was actually--
Dr. Tucker, please, Mr. Maney.
Of course, Dr. Tucker. The bylaw was included in the book because it's actually a part of it. You'll also know, notice that there's a draft declaration of trust and a draft of the Act of Dissolution in the event that that ever happens. That was included so that you could reference that and understand where this is going in, in whole or in totality.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Council, please. My concern with this is that if this reference that occurs in the state law, which is referenced about the Uniform Procurement Act and how this trust is a Board of the Town, if that is absent from our article here, then my understanding would be that this trust would not be bound by the Uniform Procurement Act. Is that correct?
Let me, let me have Town Council weigh in on that. Thank you, Dr. Tucker. Town Council?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Moderator. So the, the provision making the trust a Board of the Town is part of this. So if you look at on page 223, the proposed motion, that you're voting to do several things here. First, you're voting to accept the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 55(c), which specifically states, I think it's on page 229, that the, the trust is a public employer, the members of the Board are public employees, the trust shall be deemed a municipal agency, the trust is a Board of the city or town for purposes of Chapter 30b and Section 15a of Chapter 40. So by accepting the statute, you're creating a trust that is a department of the town. In addition to accepting the statute, you're also enacting a bylaw, and that bylaw, which you were just looking at on page 235, emphasizes the fact that the trust is a public body of the town. The final thing that you're doing is creating a special act which deals primarily with what happens if or when the trust is disbanded. So although those terms are not specifically set forth in the text of the proposed motion or the warrant article, you are actually voting to accept the documents that are part of the appendix, which include requirements that the trust is a Board of the Town.
And, and so that includes this, the, the Uniform Procurement Act.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. That's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. And then, it's just as my comments now, looking at this, so this is an interesting trust in that when looking at what they can do, which is, you know, quite broad in its application and, and that, so basically, this trust can do pretty much whatever they want. They can receive property, they can sell property, they can rehab existing property, they can do whatever they want and are answerable, you know, basically to themselves about how they decide to, to act and expend funds and so on. And it's, you know, I, I, I like the, trying to address the nimbleness by which this trust would be able to respond to opportunities without having to wait for a town meetings. However, my concern is that this, this trust can basically do whatever it wants and has little to no oversight and ongoing operations and can make decisions about how they wish to expend funds, you know, pretty much however they decide without the, the need for approval of, of a town meeting, which is what, which is the way that we otherwise are, the other recourse that we have to spend money, buy property, sell it, and, and so on. So I'm very concerned about this because the same, looking at the, the group of people that are listed as who would be members of this trust, if you look at, it's on page 230, right at the very beginning. So it's the town manager would be like an ex officio or non-voting member. There's a member of the select board. And then there's three at-large members nominated by the select board, which is a great, more directly elected officials and representatives more regularly. But everybody else on that list, the planning board, the CPC, the housing authority, the redevelopment authority, and FinCom, these are all groups, perhaps setting aside FinCom, those other groups, these, these are all the groups that have been in place and around for years in town have been completely unable to, to bring forth anything like affordable housing, if that's the real concern that, that they're trying to or need, they're trying to meet. I would say, why haven't you done it already? All the people that you, you need are all sitting together, now trying to get together on, on, on forming this new trust here by which they can basically spend money however they wish. I, I, I think this is problematic. I am deeply concerned about the, the lack of oversight and accountability here. I, I think this is an invitation for poor decision-making and misuse of public funds and property. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. All right. Next up is Sandra Souza. Can we bring in Sandra Souza? And when you're brought in, Sandra, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Hello, Mr. Moderator.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I have just a few points. I want to, second, many of Dr. Tucker's previous points, he said a number of the things that I wanted to touch upon. First and foremost, the very wide and broad discretion that this, that this trust would have, often bypassing many of the things that town meeting, you know, does at its very core right now. Another of the points that bothers me is the fact that Stoughton residents will not have any priority, and yet our CPC, our CPC funds will be going directly to this fund to, you know, to, to help establish it. Another thing that has not been mentioned is that this trust will have the ability to employ, hire and employ staff. They can hire accountants, appraisers, lawyers, administrative and support staff, and, and where they are going to be a, a town board. I have concerns about, about this because it will fall outside, again, of a town meeting. You know, will they be town, considered town employees because it's a town board? Are we going to be paying these folks benefits? And, and this trust can do all these things without really any oversight. You know, I, again, I, I applaud the desire to expand affordable housing. We need senior housing terribly in, in the town. And I am yet very disappointed, again, that something that sort of comes before us, I feel it's masquerading as a solution for senior housing, and really it's not. So, so I am, you know, just absolutely not going to vote for this because I see it being fraught with too many issues. And I'm not convinced, although I am convinced of the need for senior housing and more affordable housing solutions, I am not convinced that this is in any way the answer to, to our problems. The fact that, you know, residents from surrounding communities can come in and take the place of a Stoughton resident in this, you know, in this lottery is just not, it's not the solution that I would be looking for to vote on at town meeting tonight. We are not the only town that has been, you know, struggling with rising or soaring housing costs. So you can look at any community around, and we've all been, you know, experiencing the same thing. So what is to stop someone from Easton or Brockton or Mansfield or Randolph, any of the surrounding towns from saying, hey, you know, Stoughton is doing this really great thing. I'm going to go, you know, apply for this housing lottery. Of course they would do it because I would do the same thing. I'm just, I'm just not going to support this, I'm afraid to say. So, thank you for your time, Mr. Moderator.
Moderator, point of information?
Yes.
Who's, who's asking?
Scott Crowell.
Okay, Scott.
Just a point of information through you, Mr. Moderator, to Ms. Souza, that whether we do affordable housing for seniors in our own town, it's all open to anybody in the state of Massachusetts because it all falls under fair housing. We have people from all over the place getting into what we call Stoughton Housing Authority because it's a federally based thing. And when you take federal money, you open yourself up to a huge, huge, broad spectrum of people. And it's not just for seniors. When you have senior housing, you're going to find needy people in there. You're going to find some people who have handicaps. You're going to people with substance abuse, and so don't think that if we say, hey, it's Stoughton, it's not. Everything is open to everybody. If we have this, this affordable housing trust, we can strengthen the state laws. You're allowed to strengthen state laws. So there's, there's different ways to, if you work with a private builder, they, they call it like a burrow within, you can get Stoughton people within a, a few buildings. But you cannot, no matter what, you cannot earmark anything anymore for, for Stoughton people. It's, it's just, it's just not the way it's done anymore. It's, it's not the real world that, that we want. That's it, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Very much, Mr. Crowell. All right, we're going to move on. Next up, Lou Gieto. Can we bring in this, actually, Mr. Gieto, you're on the panel. Go ahead. Lou, state your name and precinct number, please.
I had lowered my hand.
All right, Lou, we're going to move on. Next up is Eric Anderson. Eric, please bring in Eric Anderson. Please state your name and precinct number when you're brought in, Eric.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. This is Eric Anderson, precinct two, also a member of FinCom. I will also say I'm also a member of the Stoughton Housing Authority, which also vetted this proposal. Oh, sorry. Do I, is, is that me?
I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson. I'll say I'm sorry.
I wanted to make sure I wasn't hearing voices.
Comment. I, I don't know if I can get you some assistance, but--
So I did want to start with a question and then also make a comment, if that's in order.
Sure, go right ahead.
Through you to, through you, Mr. Moderator. I'd like to address the, the concerns about oversight because I see in the, the frequently asked questions section, which I found very thorough and helpful, that of course, the Board would have to, the trust would have to comply with state regulations. I'm curious about enforcement mechanism, if there are concerns in the town of mismanagement or, you know, bias or just things that don't smell right. Is there a right to private action? Is it a state-level appeals board? I'm curious as to how the residents of Stoughton would be able to hold the trust accountable in those sorts of instances.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for that question, Eric. This, the Board of Trustees would function like any other board, like the Select Board, the Redevelopment or Housing Authority, Community Preservation Committee, minutes would be taken. Action could be taken against any one of those boards just as easily as it could be against the Board of Trustees. Further, the town manager or her representative would be an ex officio member that would be a direct oversight factor in and of itself. Does that answer your question, Eric? And Barry, want to add to that?
Yes. One of the other oversights is that the Board of Trustees in the trust has to be audited by an independent third party every year and report back to the town.
Thank you. And then if I may just move to expressing my own personal opinion. One, in response to some concerns I've heard, I would say respectfully to, you know, law, a long-term members of this community. You know, I, I've lived here just a little over seven years, which I know by Stoughton standards still makes me very much a newbie. So I don't have the roots that many of you in this meeting do. And so I don't come from that same place of wanting to prioritize. Obviously, I want to serve this community. And, but I, I feel the point needs to be made that this, the town cannot grow and sustain itself unless people are welcomed from other places and unless they move here from somewhere else like I did seven and a half years ago. I think it's important to point out that there, this is an awful expression to use, especially because I have three cats. There are many ways to skin a cat, and there are many existing programs such as our Public Housing Authority and the Planning Board that have many ways of addressing this problem, but they don't have, together, they are not comprehensive. This trust provides yet another way to add to the mix of solutions to the problem of affordable housing. It is complementary to existing programs and policies, which was very important to me when I looked at it. I didn't want duplicative bodies, and this does not strike me as one. It strikes me as a complement at two and in addition to existing programs. And it is right for everyone to be skeptical about how this would be done because it involves public funds. But I'd simply close by saying it is so much easier to imagine all the ways this can be done wrong than it is to commit to doing it right. And I'm willing to commit to doing it right, and I will, I will commit to that through the various ways that I'm serving as a, a citizen, as a member of town meeting, as a member of FinCom and the Stoughton Housing Authority. That is the commitment I'm making, and for that reason, I will be voting in favor of this, and, and I hope enough of you will join me in doing so. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Eric. All right, we're going to move on. Next up is Peter Vintresco. Please bring in Peter Vintresco. When, Peter, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Peter Vintresco, precinct eight.
I noticed at the beginning of this article, they had a nice picture of a nice little home. And they go, are they single families or three, four stories high buildings?
Mr. Zamanian, can you answer them?
Sure, through you, Mr. Moderator. Certainly from our perspective designing and creating this legislation and the policies that we hope the Board of Trustees will follow, we would not be looking at large buildings. The financing would be too cumbersome for something like that. We would be seeking what we would consider low hanging fruit, which would be single family homes, perhaps existing homes that would benefit from a deed restriction, things like that, Peter.
Well, these 40Bs have been a lot of problems from day one. All we do is see a big array of different kind of people, different kind of backgrounds, a lot of good people, a lot of bad people. It becomes a big problem for the police department. Put down fights and put down, well, just a couple of weeks ago down at the, you know, it's the old Taj Mahal across from the Hanson School where they had shooting down there. And the state police with their dogs had to come in and help the Stoughton police. Well, that's what happens a lot of times when you start doing these with low income. You start getting a big class of different kinds of people. And it's always been a problem for over 20 years here. And I'm really against this. And furthermore, if, my other question is going to be, if this committee of yours, Mr. Zamanian, were the funnest, 100%, but not getting state and federal money, could you then hold the line for Stoughton residents only? Or you're still obligated to bring in people from the outside?
Dr. Zamanian, if we can answer that, please.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Just for the record, this is not my committee by any stretch of the imagination. We had five members working hard on this. And I don't even know if I would be a Board of Trustees, member of the Board of Trustees. So it's definitely not mine. This is Stoughton's Affordable Housing Trust if it passes. In answer to your question, part of what we're urging the Board of Trustees to do is seek grant money from private businesses and even perhaps state grants funding. However, I can't stress enough the fact that you're not going to see an affordable housing trust tackle a large project. It's not feasible. There's going to be some period of time that the Affordable Housing Trust, Board of Trustees are going to require to get their feet wet, so to speak. I know that Easton has an Affordable Housing Trust. And in Easton, they are still preserving affordable housing by, you know, assisting developers who already exist with affordable housing to continue those deed restrictions on into the future perpetually. They are assisting families who are struggling to stay in their homes by getting a deed restriction on their property that helps them. Some seniors do that, folks who want to be in their homes. Low income people do that. It's, this isn't about seniors. This isn't about low income people. This, it's not about poor people. It's about fair and equitable housing for each and every member of our community. I hope that answers your question, Peter.
Well, you answered, you and your group there, you answered a lot of questions, but there was a few important questions and a few of the town meetings reps have asked. And they didn't get an answer because you did have me answer for them. So I'm going to be like a few of the other people. I'm going to vote against this article. Thank you.
Mr. Vintresco, I had a question on the Q and A to find a point of order. Point of order is just a question whether a procedure or process is being followed correctly. That's pretty much a point of order. Somebody would raise their hand and, when they have a point of order, then you would state it to a moderator when you're called upon. All right, I just answered that. So we're going to move on. Up is Robert Kramer. Can we bring in Mr. Kramer? And when you're brought in, Mr. Kramer, please state your number, please.
Thanks, Mr. Dr. Kramer, actually. So I really want to vote for this, but it just feels like there's, there isn't any substance in this. You know, the question I have here that I keep hearing that there's no answer for is, how does it work? I mean, is it, and I understand that they're saying they don't know yet. This is something that the trust would figure out. But then I hear some answers kind of thrown in there that are, that just sound kind of like musings, like it would be single family or whatever. But, so I mean, is it to buy parcels? Or would it be to subsidize market rate by paying the developers? Or is it, is it for renting? Or is it to help people, is it to help people rent? Or is it to help people to buy? And there's, you know, there's, there's one thing that I have a question that, it sounded like someone gave an answer to this earlier or just kind of threw it out there. So someone said that it's completely based on income, but not assets at all. So say someone, say someone, an elderly person sells their $600,000 home because, you know, it's too big and they're downsizing, but they're just getting social security. Can they now go for affordable housing even though they have $600,000 in assets? So I'm just kind of curious if there was an answer to that because earlier it sounded like you were saying it's fully based on income. But there are just so many questions on this that it's hard to, I haven't been convinced yet.
Dr. Kramer, did you want that question answered? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I would love for that.
Okay, let me ask Mr. Zamanian. Could you answer him, please?
Sure, I'm going to ask Barry to chime in on some of it as well. But the short answer, Dr. Kramer, is that it's a little bit of all of the above is what the housing trust could do. Because we're here tonight to speak about whether or not to accept the law in the bylaw, that's the first step in this. We need to have a Board of Trustees to determine the direction. And I certainly personally am going to encourage the Board of Trustees. And would presume, I think, given what we've put together, it's pretty much a foregone conclusion that the Board of Trustees are going to seek some of those priorities from the public itself. But the way the state statute is written, it can include some of all of what you mentioned. So we don't have a focus on that, Dr. Kramer, because that was not our job. Our job was to create legislation that fit well for Stoughton. That legislation needed to be based on Massachusetts statute. So we in and of itself had, we had some limitations, meaning we can strengthen state law, but we cannot weaken it. With that said, Barry, I think maybe you want to chime in on some of this as well?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, I mean, you've answered the question. You said what I was going to say. So in terms of the income versus assets, there is some flexibility with different projects that they can set levels at different eligibility levels. So that isn't hard and fast. But, you know, I mean, I would think that if somebody is sitting on, you know, half a million dollars or $600,000, that they probably have other options.
Right, is that it on the answer to that? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, could I just give some information the previous speaker had asked for and we didn't have?
One more time, Mr. Zamanian?
So a previous speaker asked what the limitations for a single person or a couple would be to qualify for this.
Financial limitations you're talking about?
Yes, financial limitations. Was able to get those numbers for a single person at $67,000. And for a couple, it's $77,000. So I believe, well, it was a previous speaker. I'm not, I don't remember exactly who it was, but they had asked for those specific numbers and there they are.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zamanian. Dr. Kramer, you all set?
Yeah, I'm all set. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kramer. Next up is Peter Banus. Can we bring in Peter Banus? And Peter, when you're brought in, can you state your name and precinct number, please?
Yep, Peter Banus, Precinct 2.
Go ahead, Peter.
I'm very, I'm very, very curious about the concept that they're trying to provide for the town. Makes a lot of sense. And you look through this book and it's, again, it's a bunch of legal documentation, et cetera. A friend of mine who paid taxes, he and his wife paid taxes for 20 to 25 years. They split up. He put his name in 2019. He never could get any answers, okay? I contacted the director in Taunton who used to work in Brockton. I talked to the guy in Brockton. And they all let me know, it's out of our control. There's nothing we can do. It's all federally determined. So if Stoughton is going to adopt this, and we have a Board of Directors and everything, but many of the speakers already, Pat Colburn, Dr. Tuckra, Sandra Souza, all are questioning, what is the benefit for the Stoughton residents? My main point is this. We're going to vote to allocate CPC funds. And to be honest with you, the bureaucracy of all this, I don't really see any benefit for Stoughton residents. So I would encourage people to vote against this. Thanks, Zamanian.
Mr. Banus, next up.
If I could address that, Mr. Moderator?
Who's talking?
Barry Kessler, through you.
Let's move on, Barry. At the end, I got to still allow Mr. Zamanian or yourself to provide a summary in five minutes. Even if they called a question, I still will allow Mr. Zamanian and his team to, you know, provide a summary. Move on.
Could I give a brief answer to the last speaker?
Pardon me?
Can I give a brief answer to the last speaker?
Not at this time. Howl, can we bring in Tim Howl? Tim, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number. Tim, please unmute yourself. Go ahead, Tim.
Still muted.
Tim, you're still muted. Just look at the bottom of your screen or your device there. See if you can see the microphone and just click on it. Okay. Tim, we'll come back to you. Next up is Kevin Monahan. Can we bring in Kevin Monahan? Kevin, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. Kevin Monahan, Precinct 3. I just have a question. Would there be some kind of minimum ownership time requirement for people who get these houses so they can't buy them and flip them a year later or anything like that?
Let me see if I have an answer for you, Mr. Zamanian? If you can answer that.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you for the question, Mr. Monahan. In short answer to your question is there isn't a time limit. What there is is a restriction on the property. So if you were to purchase a piece of property just for the sake of discussion for $250,000 and a year from now you either couldn't afford it or needed to move for some reason, the deed restriction stays with the property. It does not go with the Morgans and it does not go with the individual. It stays with the property. So that property could not be sold at market value for a profit. It would have to stay deed restricted.
Okay, thank you.
You all set, Mr. Monahan?
If I could just make a quick comment?
Sure.
My understanding of this sets up a good framework for something that this town desperately needs. And I am going to vote in favor. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Monahan, we're going to move on. Eric Coleman, can we bring in Eric Coleman? Eric, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct.
Here we are. Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. I move the previous question.
Second.
Okay, Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. Move the question. Second by Stephanie Carrara, Precinct 2. All right, just give me a moment to make a note here. I will allow Mr. Zamanian at the end of the next vote to do a quick summary. All right, question has been moved. That means call to question. We're going to do this by raising hand. This means put off debate. I see a number of hands still up. I have on the list, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 people in line to speak. I'm going to clear the hands and we're going to vote on debate. Moves the question. All those in favor that want, all those who are in favor of stopping and canceling debate, moving the question, raise your hand now, please. And the clerk will take the count. You got a number? Don't give it to me yet, but you all set? Are you good? Just a moment, please. We're good? All right, lower the hands, please. Please lower the hands. Keep your hands lowered. All those opposed, please raise your hand now. And the town clerk will take the count.
Not very many.
This needs two thirds. Let's lower the hands. Any abstentions? Raise your hands if you have abstentions. Okay. All right, at this point, I'm going to ask the town clerk for the result. Stephanie?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the motion to cut off debate, it was yes, 97, no, 28, zero abstentions.
You, Stephanie, motion to cut off debate passes by a two-thirds majority. Yes, 97, no, 28, abstentions too. I declare that a vote. All right, at this point in time, I got to ask Mr. Zamanian and anybody else he wants to have. Help him summarize, you have five minutes to summarize your article. Mr. Zamanian?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we've heard a lot of different people talk about a lot of different concerns. This tonight is being, the Article 10 is being presented to you as a law. Where we've written a bylaw based on state statute. We have tailored it to meet the needs of the Stoughton residents. Couple of clarifying points. This is not about 40Bs. As a matter of fact, this is an attempt to ensure that we don't have to, as Stoughton residents, deal with 40Bs or some kind of unfriendly development happening in Stoughton. The, one of the other questions that came up that I felt was very important is why isn't the CPC and the various boards and committees that would be on this Board of Trustees doing the work now? And it's a great question. The answer is simple. Because we don't have the ability to. Municipal government is slow and can be cumbersome. Developers do not want to come before the CPC and take a chance on waiting for something to happen 18 months down the line. Do we care about our Stoughton residents? Of course we do. This is about our Stoughton residents. Housing isn't only about where we live. It's about how we preserve and protect what's best about our community. To protect the generations of families who have lived here and who want to continue to live here. This is not about the poor. Affordable housing trusts are about ensuring that all members of our community have access to safe and affordable housing. These are simple facts. And I don't know Michael Barrett or Michael Heran or Joe Scardino or Barry Kessler, if any of you want to perhaps add a few words at the end here in support as well. But this really is and was put together as what is best for Stoughton. And Joe Scardino, I see your hand up. You want to say a few quick words? And Michael Barrett?
Yeah, is Joe going to speak? Is he unmuted or?
Thank you. Just a couple of points. You know, a lot's been made tonight of the lack of specificity in some of the documents. And I have And I have to say that, um, we worked in conjunction with Town Council, and the model that, um, we worked with was a model that's used throughout the Commonwealth, and was adopted based on some of the philosophies of members of the subcommittee. But by and large, our hands are tied as to, as to the kinds of things that, that can go into this document. And, uh, this, this particular, the trust, frankly, we had a, we had a debate, and it was my idea to provide the town meeting reps with a document that usually wouldn't be done until after the vote. So in the interest of transparency, we actually went into more detail than the average community would with respect to the, that the trust document, not the bylaw, or, um, some of the other documents, but the trust itself. We wanted Town Meeting to understand how this would work after we got, left town meeting. Um, the other comments about.
Joe, I'm gonna actually cut you, because we have one minute left, and I want to give Michael Barrett an opportunity to say something, too.
Are you done, Joe? Is that?
Well, the only other thing I was gonna say, just one more item, and that is, ladies and gentlemen, if the trust and the trustee goes off the reservation, Town Meeting set this up, and Town Meeting can take it down. So, uh, the idea that we would get stuck with something that is irrevocable is, is not the case. Sorry, Michael.
Yeah, no, thanks, Joe. That, that's a great point. Um, the, the one other point mark that I'd want to throw in there is that, in terms of the use of CPC funds, anything the trust does is still subject to CPC regulations, and any money would have to go back to the CPC if the, if the trust is not spending it in lines with that. The, the whole issue of the local preference, I mean, i- it's federal law. You can't restrict this just to local Stoughton residents. It's, it's something that is in the best interest of the entire town to have more affordable housing. And I see that not just for Stoughton, I, I see it every day in the paper, for Boston, or for down on Cape Cod, where I spend some time in Falmouth. I mean, all communities are dealing with this need to, to provide housing for our people, and to get bogged down into a specific, well, you can't do this. Well, nobody can do that, because the federal law doesn't allow it. I mean, the, the, the trust does not have broad discretion to just go off and spend money. They're answerable, and the transparency, as Joe mentioned, as you mentioned earlier, I think is fully there. And, and I just would really ask Town Meeting to approve this deal, because I think it's a great deal for the town of Stoughton.
Okay, and one more thing, I, in terms of accountability, any money that's provided through the CPA fund would have to be approved by you, the Town Meeting.
Thank you. We all set, Mr. Zemanian?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, thank you so much.
Thank you all for that summary. All right, I see a hand up by Kristen Vale. Kristen, do you have a point of order? Can we bring Kristen, and see if you're gonna mute yourself, Kristen?
No, I'm sorry, I hit that accidentally.
Oh, that's okay, not a problem. All right, so we, you have a point of order? Was that you? Ron Campbell?
Um, Sandra Souza's typed in a point of order stating that page 234 of the warrant, section 15-a, contradiction statement was made, just made by Mr. Barrett.
Uh, standby, please, we'll have that checked.
Mr. Moderator, through you, i- is there, I'm wondering where the contradiction is?
Sandra, if you could, when you're brought in, if you can, um, if you can clarify what's, what contradict, contradictory statements were made?
Hi, Mr. Moderator. Um, certainly. Mr. Barrett just said that, uh, any funds that were not expended would be returned, but, uh, on page 234 of the warrant, it states, in section 15-a, it states, um, funds paid to the trust, the last statement, the last sentence in that statement says, "All money is remaining in the trust at the end of the fiscal year, whether or not expended by the board within one year of the date they were appropriated into the trust remain trust property." So any funds given to the trust that are not expended, the trust, um, is able to keep, uh, as part of trust property.
All right, just, yeah.
The, the comment that was made through you, Mr. Moderator, was made in the event of a dissolution.
Solution?
Yeah, if the trust was dissolved, then any CPC assets that were not spent would return back to the CPC.
All right, let me just have.
Not physical property, but financial assets.
Let me have Town Council give them a minute or two to kinda, you're okay? Okay, Town Council, would you like to make a statement on that?
Um, thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, yes, the, the comment was, what happens to the funds if the, um, the trust is dissolved? And that's the purpose of the special act. Without the proposed special act, those funds would, would go back to the town's general fund. However, as part of this article, the proposal is to create a, um, a special circumstance for those funds, whereby any funds that are donated to the trust through the CPC, um, or the, the CPA appropriations, would go back into the, the Town's Community Preservation Act Fund, and then any other funds remaining would go to the Stoughton Housing Authority.
Mike Barrett, do you have a point of order?
Well, yeah, I, I just wanted to apologize if I was unclear on that, but I think Town Council just spelled it out very clearly, that my, my reference was only to those funds coming from the CPC would have to go back to the CPC if they were unspent.
Okay, thank you, Michael. Sandra Souza, you all set?
Yes, thank you for the clarification.
Thank you, Sandra. All right, Ron Campbell? Go ahead.
Brian Holmes had a point of order.
Uh, let's bring in Brian Holmes.
Just maybe stating, like, cut off debate, and we're still arguing.
Well, we're not arguing, we're not debating, we're clarifica, it's clarifications on these points of order and technical questions regarding the point of order. Um, so I think the moderator is, is clearly in his discretion to decide all these rules and questions. So at this point in time, we had our debate, we had questions, we had our summary, and we're gonna proceed to the vote. Let me just see, is there any more? I just reading. Yes, poll, please? And this is just for a simple majority. Simple majority is needed. All right, please vote accordingly. Yes, no, or abstain. Time has expired. Can we close the poll and reveal the results, and then we'll have Town Clerk read the, the numbers and the results?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On Article 10, yes, 50, no, 75, abstentions, four.
Thank you, Stephanie. Motion fails. Yes, 50, no, 75.
As I was saying, the motion, Article 10, fails. Yes, 50, no, 75, abstentions, four. The moderator declares that a vote. We will move on. Next up is Article 11, prison, prison warrant on 269. We do have a revised motion on this. Uh, it came in on time. Uh, there was an oversight by the moderator, they have it posted on the virtual table, straightforward. We're gonna just show it on the screen here. There was some, um, additional text added to the motion. All right, at this point in time, I'm gonna have Max Zemanian, um, read the motion, make the motion, I should say.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The proposed motion is that the town vote pursuant to General Law, Chapter 44B, the Community Preservation Act, to appropriate the total amount of $20,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, fiscal year 2022, budgeted reserve, to hire a consultant with expertise in barn construction, to evaluate the barn located between 1460 and 1498 West Street, on a parcel owned by the town of Stoughton identified as Assessor's Map 37, Lot Number 34. Such evaluation to include, but not be limited to providing estimates of the costs for various combinations of repair, partial demolition, complete demolition, scrap removal, and all other incidental and related costs, or to fund temporary emergency repairs to preserve the integrity of the structure.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Carolyn Campbell, second in that motion? Just one minute, please. All right, can I have Juan Anokian, please read the finance committee report?
The vote to approve this article failed seven to eight.
All right, I have no other committee reports on that. At this time, um, Mr. Zemanian, you gonna make the presentation?
Uh, Mr. Moderator, Dwight McCarron is with us tonight. He's the vice chair of the CPC and the, um, representative from Historical Preservation. I'd like Dwight to go ahead and make that presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. Uh, again, I want to just let the town meeting reps know, uh, this motion was sent to me on time. It was sent, I believe, on December 3rd. Uh, it was an oversight by the moderator, did not get it posted to the virtual table. All right, so clearly, the motion, and, uh, where you see the, um, I should say, the, the words in red is the additional, uh, language to that motion. Everything else should be the same as it appears in the warrant. All right, Mr.? McCarron? Dwight McCarron, can we bring him in?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you all, Town Meeting members. I certainly appreciate all the work that you have and will put in here. This property, the town purchased 55 acres of land, which included this barn, in the year 2000. They are, all this land is contiguous with the lands and trails of the Bird Street Conservation area. There are approximately 15 acres of cleared land, which Conservation Commission, in a meeting, has agreed to consider leasing to a private party, so that any parts of this barn that were saved could be made available for the use of the person who wanted to raise hay in there, or to do gardening, or whatever purposes. I've done some research on the history of the property. The oldest part of the barn could be as early as 1805, when Jesse Gay inherited the land from his father, Timothy Gay, who lived down the road. Since then, the land passed to Cyrus Gay, and then to the Hurley family, who had a large dairy farm there in the 1930s. They had, it was the Hurley family that built the barn as it stands today, built the newer portion of the barn to the left, and built it over the older part, portion of the barn to the right. And I'm told their dairy herd was upwards of, uh, 30, 30 cattle, and they, and the McNamara's beside them, ran a thriving dairy industry on, on West Street. The McNamara's bought it, and in, let's see, 1963, Father Charles granted this particular land to Ed McNamara, who farmed it from 1963 to the year 2000. Ed farmed there, used the barn, it has his hand marks, and his blood, sweat, and tears certainly went into that barn, and I visited the barn with him a number of times. Um, in the year 2000, Mr. McNamara sold it to the town. He has leased, on an informal basis, the, the land, as, when he had his horse farm down below, he haved the, the land regularly, and it does need to be haved, by the way. Whether or not we find a farmer who's willing to do it and come and do it for money, that land needs to be haved to remain pasture, and rather than growing in. Uh, so in two, in the year 2000, he sold it to the town. At that point, he bought a hor, built a horse farm down near Ames Pond, but he still used this, uh, barn to store some of his equipment. Over the years, one of the interesting things I found out about, that he had a llama that, that guarded his cattle, and both horses and a llama, at one point stayed in this barn after the dairy cow operation had ceased. So, I've looked at the barn with the, uh, Town Building Inspector and Mr. Zemanian. We agree that the left-hand part of the barn is very sound, it has a foundation in the rear that floats a little, and if we were to do emergency repairs in the short term, we might address that foundation. We might also address a part of the roof that is broken away with the aluminum siding, if you look at the picture in the, uh, warrant. Uh, three or four strips of aluminum siding have ripped away when a, a facade of the building came away, and that probably should be repaired sooner rather than later, but we would probably wait for the okay, or the opinion of the consultant, as to if he said that section of the barn was simply not worth saving, then we wouldn't expend the money probably to work on the roof. So, in a nutshell, that's my version of, of, uh, what's happening there. Mr. Zemanian, who's visited with me, may have some opinions on the matter, too, we've had some good discussions. So if he'd like to say anything about it, I yield to him.
All right, Mr. Zemanian, do you have anything to add?
Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I think the only thing I want to add is that, um, when we presented this to the Finance Committee, they had, uh, two concerns. One was, why do we need an expert to look at the barn when we have town staff? And we addressed that by having, uh, Jack Erickson, the, uh, Building Inspector, come out, and he agreed. He says, "I am not a barn professional. Um, however, um, from my professional opinion, half of the barn is structurally sound, the other half is, is dicey and probably needs to come down. However, how to do that requires an expert in barn construction and deconstruction." Uh, the second, uh, concern that FinCom had expressed, uh, to myself and Dwight, was that there was no purpose. So Dwight and I have had a number of conversations together, and we've also discussed this with Conservation Commission, and we've presented the concept or idea of leasing the property. The property, uh, originally was of agricultural use, and we felt that bringing agricultural use back to it made a lot of sense. Um, there is a great number of small farmers looking for land. I happen to be a part of a group that does integrated pest management and organic growing, and, um, see the need for land. So we've presented the concept to ConCom, uh, Conservation Commission, and although we don't have any specifics, we certainly have a goal or a focus in mind. So I feel like, you know, when presented with questions, we took a proactive approach and, um, got answers to those questions. And I think at this point, Mr. Moderator, we, myself and Dwight, would be happy to answer any questions that people may have.
Thank you, Mr. Zemanian. All right, first up, Coleman, Eric, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number. And again, to remind people, like, it's called a technical questions, pro and con debate all into one.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, who's that?
This is Mr. Gito again, with a point of order. I, uh, I, um...
Go ahead, Mr. Gito.
Okay, uh, look, I'm not, uh, I'm not against the article. I just, um, it seems strange to me that would, we would be, let me, let me be clear. So I'll start again. The proposed motion, when it, when it was heard and all, uh, was to do a study. The addition is to do repairs, and that's two different things. And I, I don't know if that all fits within the same scope of the article, or whether or not that expands it. And that's something that we've talked about for a long time, and maybe it would be helpful to have an answer to that question.
Enough, Mr. Gito. Uh, it's up to the moderator to decide scope. And since the dollar amounts don't increase, I believe, I, in my opinion, in the moderator's opinion, it does not increase the scope. Uh, and also, this article does benefit the town, if the town meeting so passes it. So it's in my discretion, as the moderator, on the Massachusetts, Massachusetts General Law, to make that determination. I so made it. Uh, also, I...
I don't know. Yeah, in the past, that, that question has generally gone to, to Town Council, but I accept whatever you want to do, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gito. Um, I would, you know, in the past, depending upon what the circumstances, I would ask the advice of Town Council, but to me, uh, this is clearly in my realm. I'm gonna decide this question. Um, it's up to the moderator at this point. It benefits the town, and I'll leave it up to the wisdom of the Town Meeting reps. I think that's real important here, leave it up to the Town Meeting reps. Uh, that's why we're here, we'll do the business of the town. And it's clear to me, it does benefit the town. But again, I'll leave it up to the wisdom of the town meeting reps. But I appreciate your, your question, Mr. Gito.
I, I want to be clear that I was not speaking for or against it. It was just a procedural.
Oh, it's a good question. Thank you for asking the question.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, let's go back to.
Eric Coleman, precinct five.
Thank you, Eric. Let's go back to Eric.
Okay. I think Mr. Gito had a good point about the town council giving an opinion. However, that's not why I raised my ass to speak. It looks like we're going to be leasing this to a farmer. And I'd like to consider costs on this. And my specific question through you to Max Zemanian, I'm sorry, is what would you expect the payback period for recovering the cost of this article and expected spending for the barn?
Manian, if you can.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. So the $20,000 that we're requesting tonight is primarily to determine what the cost of repairs to the barn would be. We did add the line to fund temporary emergency repairs, based largely on Jack Erickson, our building departments, building inspectors. He didn't suggest that we add the line, but he did say that with some quick emergency repairs that could be done here, we could definitely ensure the stability of the building. I would need the money to get a, an estimate for the repairs in order to give you a factual answer. You know, one of the things that Dwight and I would have to do if this, this article passed is actually pace out the land and determine how many farmable acres there are. I know there was approximately thirty, but that could have shrunk with, over time, with the intrusion of natural growth that is already happening in that area. So if we were to assume twenty acres at, you know, hayable fields even, one of the greatest commodities for farmers right now is hay. It's incredibly expensive, almost to the point where it's prohibitive. So certainly hay would be one possibility. But I would be truly guessing, Eric, when I said I think it wouldn't be unreasonable to presume that a ten- or fifteen-year lease would adequately, a ten- or fifteen-year period of time would adequately more than cover the cost of the barn, incidentals from year to year, things like that. I don't know if that helps you. That's truly an educated guess, Mr. Coleman.
So that's including what you would guess at the, the cost of repairing or doing what's necessary to the barn?
That's correct. But it's a wild guess as to what it would cost to repair the barn at this time.
Thank you. All set?
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. Moving along. Peter Ventresco, can we bring him? Peter Ventresco, Peter, when you're brought in, please state your day and precinct number, please.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Ventresco, precinct eight. I have some issues with this barn. The town bought this for over a million dollars twenty, twenty-one years ago. And in all that time, that barn was being used, the land was being used. And the town, I don't think, paid any money for the twenty years of a farmer being, using it. And this barn for twenty, twenty-two years has been heavily neglected. And whatever damage it was, a small amount of damage it was twenty years ago, would have been a very inexpensive proposition to fix. But now, twenty-two years later, it becomes a major, major, major operation. And, and the other thing is, I heard somebody say this barn was built, I don't know, eighteen, early eighteen hundreds. I take issue with that. I've been around barns all my life. I own one today. And if you look at the bottom page, when you open it up, there's a puffing of the guys and ladies and gentlemen walking towards you. And if you look at the floor joists on top, it sits on top of the beam, and the joists coming the other way, if you look closely, it's sistered side by side on top of the beam. Well, anything built in the eighteen hundreds, it was notched into the beam, not sitting on top of it. That's sitting on top of the beam came in the early nineteen hundreds. So that part of the barn isn't that old by looking at, you know, my calculation, looking at it, because it's a newer type back. The way that's put together there, it's what they're still using that method today. So I take issue with that picture. I don't think it's as old as it was. And like I say, there's been too much money spent there. And the farmer that used it for twenty years never gave the town a penny, and we paid over a million dollars for it. I say, forget that barn and just tear it down, or let the firemen go over there and torch it and put it off. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
Mr. Ventresco. Next up is Bob Combe. Let's bring in Bob Combe. And Bob, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please. I believe you're muted, Bob. Mute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
We hear you.
I agree with the previous speaker. I, I think it's a million dollars.
Hang on a second, Bob. What, what do we say? Day and precinct number, please.
Oh, precinct five, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Go ahead.
That's right. Twenty-two years the barn has been neglected. Again, another project in this town that's been neglected. Now it's going to cost money. You read the bottom of what you said, "For temporary emergency repairs to preserve the integrity of the structure," how much? Is that $20,000 gonna, is that referred to the, let the, added to the, the red in the article? Did we determine how much it's going to cost?
Mr. Zemanian, I don't know if you can answer him?
Did we determine how much what was going to cost through you, Mr. Moderator?
Bob, can you restate your question again, please?
Yes. You put an amount of $20,000 to have someone come in and assess the barn. On the bottom, in red, it says "For temporary emergency repairs to preserve the integrity of the structure," how much?
Well, that's the point. We, so we're asking for up to $20,000. In other words, we're asking for town meeting to appropriate $20,000 so that we can assess the condition of the barn. And perhaps, if need be, make emergency repairs. Those repairs could not exceed $20,000, obviously. But, you know, you have to figure in the reality that the evaluation still needs to be done. That would be something if this passed, that we would work with, I would assume, Mr. Paul Jaffoon on determining that evaluation and how to go about getting that done.
The question here is, this was bought by the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission let someone use the property for twenty-two years and didn't collect, I presume, any money on this piece of property. Am I right or wrong?
Can I answer him? Mr. McCarron, can you, Dwight, can you answer Mr. Coleman?
Mr. Moderator? The town.
Who's answering? Who's speaking?
The Conservation Commission purchased the land, not the Historical Commission. And there was an understanding with Mr. McNamara that he could lease the land for no charge as long as he wanted to. It was what he, it doesn't have that on paper, but that's what he was told by the selectmen. And to Mr. Ventresco's point, I made it clear, it's only one small portion of the barn that was 1805. The rest of it was nineteen thirties, built by the Hurleys. I think he missed that part. So the, and the, as far as the barn being neglected, it actually was in decent shape until two years ago, when the facade broke off the front, which was actually one of the recent additions, thirty years ago. And that, when that broke off, it exposed the roof, which is sort of the immediate short repair, needs to be made to just the front of the roof. So for the most part, most of the stuff inside does not show abuse or neglect. But there's one corner that floats, and there's the issue with the roof. Thank you.
The question I'm trying to bring across is, we had an agreement to let someone use the property for no charge. Is that right?
I believe so.
I'm, I'm just saying, Mr. McCarron, do you think this is, through you, Mr. Chairman, do you think this is right? I'm a taxpayer here, and I get taxed for everything.
Mr. Coleman, what's your question?
My question is, does someone think this is right to give someone? And it's not even in writing, which is, to me, against the law, to let someone just use the land and pay nothing for it. That's what it comes down to. I am, and all those people on this, this town meeting pay taxes.
Mr. Coleman, I gotta, Mr. Coleman, I'm gonna have to read, rule you out of order. The article has to do. If you want to make a statement, make a statement, but don't.
The statement is, I think we should vote this down and let someone else pick up the cost. You're gonna rent this out? Or let's find out what it costs before we start repairing something. That's what I'm trying to say.
Are you all set?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman, for your comments. Moving along, John Lannahan, can we bring in Mr. Lannahan? And John, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
John Lannahan, precinct one. And I'm also a member of the CPC. And I, I just wanted to say that this is not completely a dollars and cents issue. I agree with, with Mr., what the previous speaker said about seeing what the cost is before we go at it. And that's what the point of this article is. But this is one of those rare, unfortunately, all-too-rare treasures in this town now of an actual working barn or potentially working barn that we can put back into service. You know, our, our town has a long history in agriculture. And now it's, as we all know, very rare. And I think it's an opportunity to preserve that, that, that heritage that is so rapidly being, been lost. So I think getting this back, if we can follow the plan that Mr. Zemanian and Mr. McCarron had spoken of, I think that makes a lot of sense to lease out the barn eventually in, in X amount of acreage, and, and actually have it go back into agricultural production. So I, I support this article. I think, I hope other members will as well. But I think it's a, an all-too-rare opportunity we have. Yet it will be tempered by realities, by getting a real evaluation done on it, that we can know what we're getting ourselves into. Does it cost us something now? Yes, but not a ton of money. And to do some minor temporary repairs while we're getting a, a full understanding of the, of the real costs of, of making this a usable asset for the town and a, an asset that won't be lost in the long run, I think is worthwhile. Thank you.
Manian, all right, we're moving on. Lori's up next. Can we bring in Mr. Lori? David, Dave, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
David Lori, precinct six. Through you, Mr. Moderator. The first thing I want to just get out of the way is, I just wanted to say that I am in agreement with the previous speaker who brought up a point of order about the language, because it already says in the professional service portion of this motion that there's going to be an estimate for the, for the cost of repair. Now it's shifting money away from professional services into laborers and material, material and labor to actually do the work of the repairs. So how do you actually have repairs if you're supposed to be getting estimates for repairs? It's, it is an expanded scope, and because it, it shifts money away from the essential part of the article, of the article, which was to get professional services done here. The other thing is, is that they did come before the finance committee with this, and it was not positioned as a historical barn. I actually, you know, we, we got very specific about it. It was, it was built in the nineteen hundreds. It wasn't classified as being historic, except that the wood inside the building had a portion that had very interesting wood. So the materials in there could be somehow, I, I believe, could be reused for a different project that could be outlined for town meeting to vote on, but that wasn't what was presented to us. So to me, it looks like a mini feasibility study that doesn't have an idea behind it. So when we have feasibility studies, it's usually because we need a school, we need a this, we need a that. And it's, it's already outlined as to what you need before you start getting into the feasibility study. This is a feasibility study without an idea. So I, I don't, I don't see how you can start accumulating projects that don't have any idea as to what they're going to be, you know, in the long, in the long run. And the other, the other aspects of it is, is that I just, you know, we already have a barn. It's, it's called Cape and Reynolds. I think for the better part of twenty years, we've owned a historic barn that's, that's already documented as being historic. But yet, we still can't get that project off the ground to get that usable for the community. So until they come up with an idea for this thing, I, I strongly recommend that everybody votes it down so that we actually understand where, where this is going. And, and it, and for many reasons, including the information in red, it should be voted down. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lori. All right, moving along. Next up is Steve Page. Can we bring in Mr. Page? And Steve, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
I can. Speak a little louder.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Go ahead, sir.
Steven Page, precinct eight. I would like to move the question.
Okay, the question has been moved. Call the question. Is there a second? Seconded by Cynthia Walsh, precinct two. That stops debate. All right, again, after we decide the, the question here, I'll have Max Zemanian do a summary for five minutes. All right, so the question has been called. Steve has made the motion to cut off debate, seconded by Cynthia Walsh. I'm gonna need a call for a show of hands. Right now, we need to, there are one, two, there is about one, two, three, four, five, six people in line to speak. Just let everybody know, as we normally do. All right, this is the call the question. All those in favor, please raise your hand now, and the town clerk will take the count on that. All right, lower the hands, please. Please lower your hands. IT, let me know when the hands are lowered. All right, all those opposed, please raise your hand now. We need a two-thirds vote. Okay, we'll, we'll continue the vote right now. You get the count? Okay, clear the hands. No abstentions, clear the hands. Clear the hands. Abstain, all those abstain, please raise your hand. All right, when the clerk is ready, you can read the tally.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The vote to move the question, it is ninety-seven yes, twenty-one no, one abstention.
All right, the vote to cut off the debate passes by a two-thirds majority. Yes, ninety-seven, no, twenty-one, abstentions, one.
Point of order, Mr. Moderator, John Enzavino.
John Enzavino, go ahead, sir.
All right, because I can't type into the Q and A, so that's why I'm breaking in. I, I don't know why, but I'm not allowed to type into the Q and A.
Go ahead, sir.
What you have up here is an amended motion from what was in the book, correct?
Yes, it is correct.
All right, in the, in earlier articles, did we not have to vote on accepting the amended motion before we went any further with the article?
Let me get clarification from the town council. Uh, let me get clarification from the Town Council. Uh, after the Town Council, I did accept this as the main motion, so there is no motion to amend.
Well, how is this any different than the ones that were submitted that were different than what was in the book and we had a vote on it?
Okay. A description of the moderator. It's a, it's a, not a very difficult motion. I'll leave it up to the, uh, in the hands of the wisdom of the town meeting rep.
Well, I mean, it certainly would be nice to know what the rules are when they seem to change every time we turn around.
All right, so noted, Mr. Anzavino. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator?
Who's speaking?
Von Anokian, Precinct 4.
Mr. Anokian, go ahead.
I, I'd like to, uh, point of order, I'd like to find out, are we, so are we voting on the substitute motion? Or are we voting? I just want to be clear what we're voting on the next vote, that's all.
Okay.
And I'm sure a lot of town meeting members agree with this question. I'd like to be clear what we're voting on.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll, I'll. Yeah. Just one second, please. All right, um, I'll slow it down a little bit. We will be voting on Article 11, the proposed amended motion that's before you. That's what we'll be voting on.
So we will not be voting on the motion that is in the book? And we will not be voting whether or not to allow this substitute motion, correct?
That is correct. You're voting on what's on the screen before you.
Mr. Moderator, a point of information.
Go ahead, Mr. Gino.
I, uh, I agree with your, your ability to, to decide what is going to be before us. And so I, on the basis of that, would say that the, uh, proponent made a substitute motion. He didn't make the first motion and then amend it. It was, the motion was put on the floor. And that, in the past, has been the way that we have operated. So the, the, the proponent, the, uh, maker of the motion or the, the, the art, the person who is the proposer of the article makes the motion on the floor, not as a substitute, not as a, an amendment to a motion, but as the motion that he is making. And then we act on that. I mean, is that clear?
I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Gino. Now, now I get it. Thank you, Mr. Gino.
Substitute motion. Thank you. Are we all, all set now? Everybody good?
Mr. Moderator, can I, can I get a point of information, please?
Mr. Delancy, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I understand. I'm George Delinsky, Precinct 2. I, I'm a little confused on this. So if I vote to, for this article, I'm authorizing the expenditure of up to $20,000 to get an estimate to fund temporary emergency repairs, which could cost $100,000. So if I vote yes, the unknown number, uh, for the red amount, for the red statement that's on this article now gives it carte blanche to spend as much as they want to repair this article.
No, no, no. Up to $20,000.
No, you send it to appropriate, the total amount from, to hire consultant to evaluate the barn, doesn't say anything about repair. Just by the estimates of the cost, we could spend a hell of a lot more money than $20,000.
It says, if you read, red, red letter says or to fund temporary emergency repairs, up to that $20,000.
I disagree with you, Mr. Moderator, I'm sorry.
Let me have.
George, I agree with you.
I'm having some issues. I'm gonna ask also one second, please.
Yes, thank you.
I have, look, I'll also weigh in.
Okay. Through you, Mr. Moderator. Um, so as to that very last question, um, in my opinion, based on the wording that is in front of you on the screen, if you vote in favor of this article, you are voting for the expenditure of a maximum of $20,000. And that $20,000 can be spent on the, the study, um, to determine what the repair should be. And it can also be spent on any temporary emergency repairs that are determined that need to be made. But in no event can the combination of those two things exceed $20,000 unless they come back to town meeting. Um, so the maximum amount that you're voting to authorize here is $20,000. Um, with regard to the procedure that is being used that resulted in the addition of the, um, the language in red, I agree with the previous speaker that, um, that the more appropriate terminology here would be a substitute motion. Um, the, the way that, that town meeting votes are, are constructed is you start off with a warrant article. And the warrant article gives notice to the voters as to what the subject matter is that you're going to be voting on. Um, here in, in Stoughton, um, as a courtesy to the town meeting members, there is a proposed motion put forward in the book. However, it's not until we get here at town meeting and someone actually reads a motion on the floor, that a motion is actually made. And whether it's the proposed motion or, um, something else, that motion does not have to match the warrant article exactly. Um, and so it is the motion that is read on the floor that sets forth what you're actually voting on. And, um, I was just speaking with the town clerk, and it's my understanding that under Article 1, a substitute motion was, was in fact presented and voted. Now, this is different than an amendment. An amendment occurs that, once the main motion is made, then that can be amended by a motion to amend on the floor. Um, but that only comes into play if someone wants to change the main motion after it's already been made. So here, the main motion included the language in red because that, that is what was read aloud at the meeting. And in my opinion, that is what is properly in front of you. And that's what you'll be voting on. And again, in summary, a total of $20,000 to do either or both of those things, the feasibility study and the emergency repairs.
Okay. So I think, to be clear, I mean, in the future, this delays the process, so I take the motion from the book? Do we make changes? And we're gonna end up in the same location or the same place eventually anyways. But probably wanna take it from the book and we just delay the process a little longer. I'm not gonna do that this evening, but I'll do that in the future. And then I'm sure that we'll get to the arguments the other way, that why are we taking so long to get to the substitute motions or the revised motions, et cetera? Uh, because we, I've seen it done both ways at this town meeting. Not this particular town meeting, but in the past. All right, so what we'll be voting on is the proposed motion that is in front of you. Now, as I mentioned, uh, we did cut off debate. I also, uh, have, uh, stated to everybody at town meeting here that I will allow Mr. Zemanian a five-minute wrap-up summary. Uh, please proceed, Mr. Zemanian.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, and I want to make sure that Dwight McCarron is here to make any additional comments. But to, from my point of view, this is a very simple choice. Um, we have a barn regardless of past practice. Uh, it is a, uh, this was something brought to the Community Preservation Committee by Historical Preservation, uh, through the Historical, Historic Commission. Um, there was some concern about the barn and its integrity. Um, the CPC unanimously voted to support $20,000 to have an evaluation done on the barn to turn, to determine whether or not the barn is savable. Um, once we had, uh, the Town Building Inspector out, um, it was determined that it would be in the best interest of the town to ask the moderator and Town Council if we could provide a substitute motion that would allow for, uh, the funding of some emergency repairs. Uh, that's, I want to state the word emergency. This is not about fixing anything right now. It's simply to ensure the integrity of the building will be sustained until we have an opportunity to get that evaluation done and, uh, ask town meeting for approval for those monies. Here's what happens if we do nothing, which is exactly what's happened here for 22 years. Uh, the building will fall down in one to two seasons. When it does, CPC will no longer be able to put any money into the barn. The money will come from town meeting, again, from the general fund, to have the debris removed from the property. Not to mention the danger that would exist to folks who come in and out of this property and use it for hiking and stopways and things like that. So from my perspective, you know, the CPC is offering $20,000 in cash to get the building evaluated. We're also asking to include any emergency repairs that may need to be done during that evaluation to ensure the structural integrity of the building. With that, um, Mr. McCarron, if, if you have anything more you'd like to add, please do.
Two quick things, that Conservation Commission is on board with this. We took this proposal, proposal to them before we went to the CPC. They have to buy into it for us to bring it forward. And two, in response to Mr. Lori's question about the historical nature, I'll have to be honest that the more I researched the barn and the history of the land, the more it was clear to me that it was clear, it was historical, yeah, and certainly one half of it, and possibly going back to 1805, possibly some of those original timbers. Mr. Ventresko's point about the rest of it being 1930s notwithstanding. So thank you. I don't want to take any more of your time, but I hope you'll let us spend a few dollars to try and preserve this wonderful barn.
Thank you, Dwight. And if I could just add one last point. Um, without a barn, there's no viable lease for a farmer. The farmer has a need for storage. Um, if we were to preserve this barn, and this will be a discussion at a later town meeting, I'm sure. But without the preservation of this barn, it's a far less attractive, uh, situation for a potential up-and-coming farmer. So I urge and, and ask town meeting to support this $20,000 cash article to, A, preserve the integrity of this piece of history for the town, but more importantly, to give the town an opportunity and the CPC an opportunity to do something with the lands that we have either purchased or been bequeathed. And thank you, Mr. Moderator, for everybody's time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zemanian. All right. Hang on a second. I just want everybody, again, you'll be voting on the motion that's before you on the screen. All right, let's just take a moment. Everybody can read it again. Uh, I want you to be clear. That's the motion we'd be voting on. Do I see someone raising their hand? Point of order, I believe, Robert Cohen. Let's bring in Robert Cohen, if it's a point of order. Bob, when you're brought in, please state your name, precinct number, and your point of order.
My name is Robert Cohen, Precinct 5. Is this a two-thirds vote or a regular vote, may I ask?
Majority vote. Good question, Bob.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any other hands. They go down. Uh, Eric Coleman, let's bring in Eric Coleman. When you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number and your point of order.
Eric Coleman, Precinct 5. And I hope this is not out of order. Uh, but, uh, will, would the leaseholder be able to make improvements to the barn?
Uh, the question time is over, Eric.
Oh, thank you. That's all right.
Thank you very much. Good question, but you should have asked that a little earlier. Thank you. All right, um, again, uh, the motion before you on the screen, that's what we'll be voting on. All right, I gotta now bring up the poll. Here's the motion, simple majority. All those in favor or opposed, please vote accordingly. You have 25 seconds. Time, time has expired. Please end the poll. Share the results. Don't tell me it's. Uh, just be with for a moment, we're just checking the book. Hang on one second. We're gonna have, uh, we're gonna share the results, and the town clerk will read the numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On the proposed motion, the proposed amended motion for Article 11, it's 65 yes, 65 no, no abstentions.
And, and Town Council will explain the moderator's position on this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Um, so this article required a majority vote, um, to pass. That means one more than 50%. Um, in this case, the vote was tied 65 to 65, which means it does not carry. Um, a suggestion has been made in the room here that perhaps the moderator could vote to break the tie. Um, according to our rules of procedure in town meeting time, a moderator cannot vote even to break a tie in a representative town meeting unless he is a, a town meeting member. Um, I have been informed by the town clerk that the moderator is not a town meeting member. Therefore, um, he does not have the authority to break the tie, in my opinion. Um, and therefore, the motion does not carry.
All right. Now it's kind of late now. All right, um, let me just, uh, announce, let me just announce and declare the vote. It, the vote is 65 yes, 65 no, zero abstentions. The motion fails, as it does not pass for the majority. All right, at this point in time, I'll, I will hear Elliot Hanson. Let's bring in Elliot Hanson. Elliot, if you have a point of order, please state your name and precinct number and your point of order.
Uh, can you hear me?
I hear you. Please state your name.
Oh, saints be praised, another miracle. I was just gonna reiterate what our, say what the Town Council had said, that the, the town meeting, the moderator can break a tie, but he has to be a member of town meetings, and you're not. So that's your own fault.
No, it's not my fault. I think it's better if the moderator does not become a town. In my own opinion, it's best if the town moderator is not a town meeting rep.
All right, then I'll forgive you this time.
Thank you for your comments, though, Elliot. All right, anybody else? All right, so that motion has failed. All right, we're gonna move on. Thank you all for your voting. All right, now we're onto Article 12, plastic bag reduction by law. That appears on page 277 of your warrant books. All right, at this point in time, I'm gonna ask for Molly Cochrane to read the motion, please. Can we bring in Molly Cochrane, please?
Hi, this is Molly.
Hi, this is Molly. Can you hear me?
Molly. Go ahead.
Did you want me to read the bylaw? In the interest of time?
Yeah, in the interest of time, you could just say, let me just have town. Since it is a petitioned article, let me just have them take a quick peek at that. Just one second, Molly.
Thank you.
Read the top line. Molly, if you can read the top line on page 277, right on Article 12.
Yes, Plastic Bag, Article 12, Plastic Bag Reduction by Law, to see if the town will vote to amend the town code, adding the article as printed in the warrant below. And then it goes on for two pages.
That's fine. We're good town council. Yes, that's fine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Carolyn Campbell and also Luigi, I believe. All right, at this point in time, I need to hear from the Finance Committee. Juan Anokian, could you read your Finance Committee report?
Yes, the Finance Committee voted 15 to 0 to refer this article to town meeting.
Thank you, Juan. Next up, Intergovernmental Relations. Agavon Shoemaker, could you read the report, please?
Intergovernmental Relations voted yes, 7, no, 0, to recommend this article to town meeting.
Thank you, Agavon. Municipal Operations, Cynthia Walsh, could you read the committee's report?
Municipal Operations Committee voted 5 to 0 to unanimously approve recommending this article to town meeting.
And for Municipal Regulations Committee, Carolyn Campbell, could you read your report, please?
Hi, Mr. Moderator. The Municipal Regulations Committee voted unanimously 4 to 0 to recommend approving this article to town meeting.
Thank you all for reading the reports. Appreciate that. Molly, you have up to 15 minutes to make your presentation, and I believe we're gonna allow you to present a PowerPoint.
Yes. I'm looking for my shower share screen, which just disappeared when you did that.
Okay, take your time.
Hold on. All right. All right, I think, I think I have the PowerPoint up.
Yep, there you go. There you go.
Slideshow. Light words, slideshow. All right, thank you, everybody. I appreciate your attention for a few minutes while I go through this article and the reasons for that. I'd also like to thank the people in town who helped me gather signatures. I'm very much appreciated. This is a really important issue for the town and for our environment, which seems sometimes those issues very, very abstract, but I want to bring it a little bit down to earth so we can see how meaningful it is to all of us. I'd also like to point out that the Energy and Sustainability Committee also took a vote to approve and to recommend this article. I did present a lot of scientific facts and background in the facts presentation that's on the virtual table, but I just want to go into an overview now with my PowerPoint. So here we have a classic picture of a seabird and captured into a plastic bag, which unfortunately, one sees those from time to time. So, all right. I want to talk about the scope of the problem. So why are we talking about plastic bags? Begin with a quote that I just saw in New York Times in October that said, "More than 10 million tons of plastic waste dumped into the ocean every year." So you can see this is a highly escalating problem. The second quote I saw in Consumer Reports over a year ago, rather shocking on the front, on the cover page, "You may be consuming as much as a credit card worth of plastic a week." And then, thirdly, the statistics specifically on plastic bags are that they're being produced at a rate of 1 trillion bags per year. So we're in a situation now where our planet and our wildlife is just literally being suffocated by plastic. And this is an example. This is a picture of the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, which was discovered, I guess, many years ago. It's actually divided apparently into two different sections, which are swirling around out there in the oceans. And the statistic I found from National Geographic that just one of those two areas is 7.7 million square miles. So again, this is garbage created by humans that is floating in our oceans. Want to take a second to just talk about the historical perspective. There was a time when we functioned as a society without plastic bags. There was a time when we went to the store and they didn't have plastic bags. So plastic bags, of thin, single-use plastic bags, and that's what we're really focused on here. They were first introduced into grocery stores in the early 1980s. They were pushed by the petroleum industry, which saw it as something else that it could produce and make a profit on. So all these decades later, as so many problems are rising with plastic bags, it's time for us to consider, are we just passive consumers that are gonna buy or use whatever is handed out? Are we gonna take a critical look at this situation as engaged citizens? And quite frankly, we're town meeting members, so we are engaged citizens. So amongst the many issues caused by plastic bags, this one is visible to the human eye. We all see these bags littering the landscape. They're quite atrocious to see. People, of course, are careless with them or accidentally these get out into the landscape. So not only are they very unsightly, they actually can clog storm drains and they can exacerbate flooding. And in fact, I recently read that one of the first countries to ban plastic bags was Bangladesh specifically because of the problems it was causing with flooding. Next, as you can imagine, the effect on wildlife and on marine life and on biodiversity is very, very profound and extreme. There were many pictures that I could have shown you of the stomachs of some of these wildlife or marine animals that have ingested all sorts of plastic, including plastic bags, but it was rather disturbing to look at. So I instead chose a picture of a beautiful sea turtle. And sea turtles are cited again and again as one of the species of wildlife that is often just simply eating the plastic bags and it suffocates them. They starve to death, so it's very tragic. But as you see from my statistic, at least 331 species have been found with eating plastics. So it's a widespread problem. So let's talk about us and plastic. Speaking of eating plastic, so plastics are forever and they are toxic. They don't break down organically. They break down into these little things called microplastics. Those microplastics are in the oceans and the waterways. The microplastics, they're leaching the harmful chemicals from these petroleum products, and they're also absorbing harmful chemicals. Unfortunately, these chemicals are entering our food supply. So when you sit down to have a beautiful dish of seafood, which I know we all enjoy here in New England, you're eating these dangerous chemicals. You're eating the microplastics. And here is a picture I found of what microplastics look like. So they're actually not that micro. They are visible to the human eye. Again, that is what these plastic bags are breaking down into. One of the important points I wanted to make, in addition to all these other reasons, is the connection between plastic bags and climate change. So climate change used to be something we could hope would be put off for a couple of generations until we figure out how to manage or handle these extreme threats. They're on, these problems are ongoing now. We're seeing the terrible fires down the West Coast. We're seeing droughts. We're seeing floods. We're seeing tornadoes. These things are taking lives and they're posing incredible threats to stability all across the world and to safety of everybody. The connection between plastic bags and climate change is that, first of all, they are produced by petroleum extraction, which alone facilitates climate change. And because they're made of polyethylene and they break down, they are releasing methane. And you don't have to read too much about climate change to know that methane is like a huge problem. It's actually apparently much more intense as far as warming the climate than even carbon dioxide. So anything that you can do to reduce methane has a huge effect on climate change. So the solution, given these widespread problems that have been documented by scientists, academics, organizations over the years, there is a very strong momentum now to simply ban the plastic bags and in some cases, tax them. But at least 77 countries have banned or taxed the bags. I think most of those are out now banned. And India is among the latest to do that. Eight states have entirely banned the bags. And then here in Massachusetts, 104 cities and towns have been ahead of us. They have already banned these single-use plastic checkout bags, including our neighbors, our friends in the Hockamock League, Milton, East St. Canton, and Sharon. So it's really high time that we take a close look at what we can do about plastic bags. So many of the widely known and sophisticated environmental organizations are, have supported, and these are just a few of the ones that I looked up to confirm that, in fact, their position is against these single-use plastic bags. So let's just talk a moment about the bylaw. It is fairly simple, and it is, just to clarify, it's narrow. It's just about the checkout bags. It's not about the bag at the deli. It's not about the bag you might pull to put your lettuce in. You might choose to bring another kind of bag for that, but if you don't, that's fine. Those bags can still be used. It's the point to purchase bags as you're leaving the store. You know, where do your groceries go? Where do your drugstore items go? Or what other items go? So it is narrowly tailored. It is giving also a six-month grace period for smaller retail stores. I'm not concerned about the Stop &amp; Shops and things of that nature. And by the way, Price Right essentially doesn't use those single-use plastic bags. They use thick reusable plastic bags, so it won't impact them at all. And then enforcement is through the Board of Health, which I did meet and present this to the Board of Health just a few days ago and did get, they did not take a formal vote, but did talk it through with them. And there was no, you know, formal opposition based on Board of Health reasons. So I was happy to get that reviewed by them as well. And I have modeled this after, I believe it's Sharon's bylaw, and spoke both with Sharon and with Canton about how their bylaws have gone, their new adoption of these types of bans have gone and have gotten just the report that it's been, it's been smooth. It's been not onerous and that they haven't gotten a lot of pushback. So I feel confident that this is something that the Town of Stoughton can adopt, too. And then, of course, the whole, the hope is that people switch to alternatives to plastic, whether it's canvas bags, cotton bags, nylon bags. If we were there in person, I was gonna bring you about 17 different examples of the bags I have in my house, little ones that fold up and can go in your purse, bigger ones you leave in the trunk of your car, always try to leave a couple in your car. And this is the hope that people, again, instead of the use and throw and use and throw culture, that we have something that's reusable. And then finally, I'd like to say, you know, the message behind this is important. Certainly, this raises public awareness about sustainable practices. And also would adopting this would demonstrate that Stoughton, as a town, is committed to fighting climate change. And I think it's important that, you know, internationally, nationally, on the state and on the local level, that everybody's engaged in that battle. And then secondly, I really want to send a message to industry and to manufacturers about the deluge of plastic. And everything that you buy, everything that they mail to you, is really overpackaged in plastic and without a thought, without a thought whatsoever as to the devastation that that causes. So and then finally, I want to thank everybody for their consideration. I know it's very late tonight, and I know that some of this information is quite new to people, but I would hope that we would take the issue very seriously and hopefully rise to this challenge. Thank you, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Molly, for your presentation. All right, at this time, we're gonna hear from some town meeting reps. And again, they'll, as I mentioned, will consolidate this. So it can ask technical questions, pro and con debate in the same period here. Then at the end, Molly, after they're done, even if the question is called, you will have five minutes for a summary. All right, so we're gonna proceed here. I believe, fill you up for us. Can we bring in Mr. Ventresco? And Peter, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Hi. Peter Ventresco, precinct eight. I'm not in favor of this grocery bags because I can go shopping, my groceries, I can put six bags of groceries from my wrist to my elbow, and it makes it easier for me to get to the house with a key in my right hand. And then I use them bags for trash. And they go in a bigger trash bag that the town picks up and takes it down to Samantha there to burn down a roach or something to make inexpensive electricity. So we're not banning bigger trash bags, thicker plastics, or even thinner plastics. So that leaves a question to be answered, like if the company's made the grocery bag just a hair thicker, then the bag would be okay. This is what I'm getting out of this. Okay, so used bags, I'm not a fan of used bags because eventually, they get built up with germs because you got chicken in there one day, and then you come home and you go back again, you got food and stuff in there and it's coming contamination with the chicken. So I don't think that's a healthy thing to do. And then, if, and oh, the Pacific Ocean, that's where them plastic islands are. And it's not from the Americans, the West Coast or, it's from the Asian countries and the South Sea countries in the Pacific that's caused it. The Atlantic Ocean is clean. There's no plastic islands floating around on the Atlantic Ocean. So I don't know why we should be suffering because of what the rest of the world is doing. I'm not a fan of that. And, okay, and if Ms. Cochran wants to save the world, instead of going after the plastic grocery bag, go after Amazon, the paper boxes. You buy a little gift maybe the size of a cigarette pack.
Mr. Ventresco, please stay on subject matter. Mr. Ventresco, we're on the plastic bag, not on Amazon or their box.
Well, I'm just saying, if you want to save the world, go save the trees. We get a better reason.
We're not on saving the trees either. We're talking about plastic bags. Thank you. You all set, Mr. Ventresco?
Yeah, because you don't listen to me.
All right, we're moving on. Javi Spack, you're up next, please. Bring in Javi Spack. Javi, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Javi Spack, precinct three, also a member of FinCom. Molly presented quite a case to us in front of FinCom, but I'll reiterate what I said to her there. Plastic bags, in my opinion, and I could be wrong, were supposed to replace the paper bags that we were chopping down trees to make. And we have a problem. Every tree we chopped down, we chopped down something that produces photosynthesis, which changes carbon dioxide into oxygen. We have to breathe. I think, and I will say this again, as I said to her, it's an education process. You try to educate people to dispose of the plastic bag properly. Granted, there are people who don't dispose of it properly. Much the same as there's people on TV saying, "Get vaccinated," and people don't get vaccinated. You can't force people to do everything properly. The only worry I have right now is, are there gonna be enough trees to make us oxygen? Because we're driving automobiles around and we're polluting the atmosphere. And if we chop those trees down, we're not gonna clean up the atmosphere and we're not gonna have any air to breathe. So we have to make a decision. My thought is, we should push the scientists, come up with a bag that is biodegradable, even though it is made out of plastic. That's all I have to say. I'm gonna vote against her, I think.
Thank you, Javi. We're gonna move on. Next up is Brian Holmes. Please bring in Brian Holmes. When you're brought in, Brian, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Even Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I do. Name and precinct.
Brian Holmes, precinct three.
Go ahead, sir.
Three, Mr. Moderator. Will this go to the voters for a valid question as a referendum?
Molly, can you answer that?
My understanding is that it does not go to the voters.
Town Council, could you weigh in on that, too? Just to confirm that? Just as we have town council here, I'm weighing.
Thank you to you, Mr. Moderator. This is a proposal to adopt a general bylaw. There is no requirement that it be approved by the voters at an election. So if it is approved here, the next step, it will go to the Attorney General's office for legal review, and if it passes there, then it becomes a bylaw of the town with no further voting.
Thank you, Town Council. Brian Holmes, you still up?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Through you to the petitioner. This idea come up before the worldwide supply chain crisis that we have going on?
Did it come up with me? Did it come up with other people in Massachusetts? It's certainly been on my mind for pre-COVID times that this was a move that this town should be making personally.
Okay, so you thought of the idea then before we had a worldwide supply chain crisis, then, right?
I thought of the idea, yes, I certainly did.
Okay. Fair enough. So, three, Mr. Moderator. The bylaw here that you proposed, or the town code that you're proposing, does it have a right of appeal built into it? Or does this trigger a right of appeal anywhere that's already in existence in the town code?
Molly, if you can answer that for him?
There isn't something specific. If you'll see the enforcement mechanism, it's fairly easygoing, quite frankly. And you can see that it's about, you know, a warning and then a relatively small fine and another relatively small fine. This really is not about, you know, giving a hard time to retailers. This is really about a cultural shift whereby the consumers, the citizens in this town, move away from plastic bags and hopefully move to reusable bags or those instances where you have two items in your hand. You just simply walk them out to your car rather than putting them in a plastic bag, which is, it's kind of our habit to do that now, right? And it's a habit that turns out to be a little bit unnecessary. So it's... So it's, I don't, you know, like anybody else, if somebody thinks they've been wrongly cited, I think they would have whatever, you know, whatever rules the Board of Health otherwise follows with respect to, you know, citing somebody or finding somebody or taking action against them. I would think the same set of rules would apply as to any retailer who might be violating a plastic bag by law.
So I mean, I certainly recognize your your proposal is well intentioned here, but hypothetically, under the Administration and Enforcement Section D, you could issue a warning on Monday, a fine on Tuesday, another fine on Wednesday, and by the end of the week, six hundred dollars in fines racked up with no right of appeal written into what I see in front of me here. That's my concern. I was asking about it.
Well, can I just say, just having sat in on a Board of Health meeting earlier this week whereby two establishments had a number of violations, a number of delays, a number of problems with not getting the proper licensing. They seem to be, they were very serious for, they certainly took their obligations quite seriously, but they also seem to to give plenty of, you know, warnings and working with businesses that they want to succeed. So it's, I don't think you're going to have, unless you put somebody on the Board of Health who wants to go around slapping around fines, I don't think that that's really the concern. On the other hand, if somebody feels that they want to do business in this town and they're not willing to abide by the will of the town, you know, the town bylaws, then I guess that's a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Next up is Paul Demuse. Can we bring in Paul Demuse? Paul, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Paul Demuse, Precinct Three. The previous question brought up one of my points about this wouldn't have to go to a referendum. To me, this is a slippery slope. When I'm out walking, I see more COVID masks on the ground than I do plastic bags. And as for local, you know, advocacy, I can't even say it. Advocacy, that it's one thing if this happens on a state level. Pecking away at, you know, things in in the town, to me, isn't the way to go about things. This this should go to a state level, and if the whole state does it, so be it. Thank you.
You all set, Paul?
I am. Thank you.
Hey, thank. All right, next up is John Lenahan. Can we bring in John Lenahan? John, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
John Lenahan, Precinct One. I want to compliment Molly on on the presentation. I think she, it was complete and it was sensitive and it and it hit all the right tones. I think, you know, when we talk about, one of the previous speakers just spoke about doing it on a state level. If you look around us, we're surrounded by towns that have already done this, and our bags are blowing into their towns at this point. So this is about being responsible citizens and correcting a wrong that is taking place in this town. We've, you know, I appreciate another previous speaker's concern for the trees, but the reality is that there are so many alternatives to the paper bags. And this is, as Molly said, a cultural shift, you know, to people being a little more sensitive, a little bit more thoughtful about how they live their lives. So I support this wholeheartedly. I congratulate Molly and the people who helped her get signatures. It's it's about time we did this, and let's not be the last town in. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, John. Excuse me. Okay, next is Dave Laurie. Can we bring in Dave Laurie? Dave, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Yeah, David Laurie, Precinct Six. Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. It's kind of a little bit of irony for me. I can't stand plastic. I share that in common with the petitioner who spoke eloquently about the topic. What's unusual, the reason it's ironic is that plastic bags are my favorite plastic out of all the plastic. I can't stand plastic, but I love plastic bags. They do so much for me. I I use them around my house. They're not single use. I use them two or three times, you know, because I have waste baskets all over my house, and it's a perfect liner where I just tie them up and they end up in the trash. And I'm kind of, you know, the original, the first previous speaker talked about how clean this coast, you know, and New England is about plastic bags and that it comes from maybe other regions of the world. But I I think somebody who says like, we could, you know, that these are somehow going to, that our bags are going to blow around into all these compliant towns, I think is, I just think is, I think that's a weak thing to state. And I think it's kind of an insult, actually, because I'm very responsible with my with my waste and and I like my plastic bags. The other point is, is that I do find myself shopping at one of these neighboring towns that have these laws, and I end up having to bring home paper bags. They don't make paper bags the way they used to. Every single time I try to pick up my paper bags, they rip, and I end up spilling them either, the the goods into my car, on the driveway, in the house, on the floor. It's a royal pain in the neck. I just, I like my plastic bags. I wish we could get rid of plastic in other areas, but I like, you know, plastic bags are essential. They're not single use. It says, says all over this presentation about single use, single use, single use. It's anything but single use. It's the only thing that I I've, I get pleasure out of recycling. I actually feel good, like I'm doing something positive for the planet. I recycle my bags and all the, you know, so I'm against it just because I really want my plastic bags. Thank you very much.
It's time, we have a town resident that called in. Under our charter, town inhabitants can talk at town meetings, it just can't vote. On the line, can you please identify yourself and provide your address, please?
Yes, Mark Struck, Ninety-Three Forest Road.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And thank you for the town meeting reps for allowing a citizen of Stoughton to speak. If it was earlier in the evening, I probably would have had my children talk to you. But seeing how they're asleep, I will. Feel that this is a small step that our community can take to clean up the environment. I heard a previous speaker say that there's COVID masks all over the place and other trash around town. I know there are a couple of groups of individuals in our town that go around and clean up the town to make it beautiful. And if we can take one step by eliminating the plastic shopping bag, then why not? It's worth it. It's worth it now, and it's worth it for our kids' futures to have a planet that they can actually live on. Thank you again, Mr. Moderator, and thank you, Town Meeting, for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Struck. Have a good evening. All right, next on the list, we have Dave Billo. Can we bring in Mr. Billo? And Dave, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please. You're breaking up a little bit, Dave. Can others hear you? We don't hear you too well, Dave. Can you maybe, I don't know if you can clear up your microphone?
I'm speaking into it as directly as I can.
That's perfect. Now you're, now you're very good. You're all set.
Dave Billo, Precinct Four, member of the Stoughton Energy and Sustainability Committee. I did just want to confirm what Molly had said, that the committee is in favor of this article. And just a couple of quick things. One is there actually is a fair amount of plastic in the Atlantic, unfortunately. It's not, doesn't quite make the news and isn't to the extent as the Pacific. But and the waste that does go to the incinerator locally, Stoughton's waste does create some electricity, but it's also electricity that is dirtier than coal, coal-based electricity. So it's not exactly the best alternative. And, you know, unfortunately, there are no easy answers. I think this this ban is a step in the right direction and does line us up with other towns in our in our area. And I'm personally in favor of it. And again, wanted to confirm that the Energy and Sustainability Committee is as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Is Ian Turland. Please bring in Mr. Turland. And Ian, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Ian Turland, Precinct Eight. And I just wanted to say that I am really excited and proud that this motion is before us tonight. I think this allows us to kind of be, put ourselves on the right side of history. And I also just address some of the other points. I look outside, I can look outside my window today and see plastic bags, cotton trees. So they do have a pollution, a flint effect on our town. And in terms of, you know, there are no shortage of alternatives, both in terms of reusable bags that you can bring to the store. And I do think that paper is certainly a very viable alternative. And I think the notion that we are going to run out of oxygen because of producing paper bags is frankly just a bit ludicrous. So I'm voting for it, and I encourage everybody else to vote for it as well. Thank you.
Very much. Next is Sylvia Whiting. Can we bring in Sylvia? And Sylvia, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Hello, it's Sylvia Whiting. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Bye, please.
Yes, I just wanted to say that I am totally in support of this motion, this question, and I hope that other people will consider it. I really think the talk about you love your plastic bags is a little bit ludicrous that there are certainly many alternatives to how you can line your trash bags, trash waste baskets in your home and carry your groceries into the house. That's what cloth bags are used for. They can be washed, put them in the washing machine. Just wanted to note, we can't recycle our way out of the plastic pollution crisis. There's simply too much plastic, single use plastic, being produced and consumed. Just to reiterate, the reason a ban would be good for our community in Stoughton, the reasons are numerous. They're rarely recycled. Plastic bags are rarely recycled. They clog recycling operations. The development I live in, we're getting fined because people recycle, but they put plastic bags into the recycle bin, and then that clogs up the machinery, and we get fined. They can clearly contribute to climate change, and they cause unsightly litter in our development. We're always picking up other people's plastic bags that they let fly around the development. And I think the effect on wildlife is just so devastating. The photos that Molly showed were just a minimum couple. But if you go to the beach, go and see the wildlife, see the litter on the beach, go to Revere Beach, go to Nahant, go to other beaches along the shore, there's plastic, plastic bags and other plastic everywhere. So I think that, and according to Waste Management, only 1% of grocery bags are returned to the grocery stores to be recycled. So you could return your plastic bags to the grocery store in their bins, and they will recycle them, but you don't do that. People don't do that. Only 1% are recycled, so it's really a misnomer to think that they're being recycled. And even recycling them to reuse them, eventually they're thrown away. So that's really not a solution to this problem. So I really hope that people will listen to this and to talk about, well, the Pacific Coast is people from, what, China, Japan? I mean, let's be real. We are contributing to this problem, so we need to contribute to the solution. And I really thank Molly for bringing this forward.
Thank you, Sylvia. Moving on, we have Denise Bronson. Can we bring in Denise Bronson? Denise, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Denise Bronson, Precinct Eight. I'm going to vote no for this. For one thing, the earth makes oil, coal, and natural gas. It was created four hundred, four hundred million years ago in the sea. Amoebas, algae, plankton, buried and compacted and pressured caused the heat. So, you know, this under biodegradable bag statement, and she says, talks about fossil fuels, that's incorrect. Also, I agree with the previous speaker. There's no such thing as climate change. Plants need CO2 and give off oxygen. If you reduce the CO2, people are going to starve. The other point is, people can, should learn how to dispose of them properly. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Denise. Next up is Lou Judo. Lou, you're on the panel. Can you just unmute yourself and state your name and precinct number, please?
Lou Judo, Precinct Four. I'm very much in favor of this article and thank Molly for putting it forward. You know, I'm kind of an old guy, and I, some of the discussion really just amazes me. It's shocking to me that we would have these vast areas in the Pacific that are just plastic, and we're only seeing part of that because there's a whole lot of that plastic that's at the bottom of the sea as well. And we see all of the things that are going on in the world that we are helping to cause, and that we have this huge brain that can do things to reduce the problems that we see before us. And consider that plastic bags are so important that we really shouldn't take any action. In the small town that we go to in Maine, Rangeli, they have banned plastic bags. People use cloth bags. Can you imagine that? It's not even paper. They, they, people can come in with their cloth bags and bring their groceries home. We can all do things that make the planet a little bit better. I mean, we've done in the past twenty to thirty years, maybe longer than that, actually, but the effect with our population increase and the and the use of materials has just exacerbated the problem. You know, we can, we can do something, and we really ought to do that. I don't mean to be preachy, but maybe I am. But I'm absolutely going to be in favor of this, and I hope that many of you are as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Lou. And next up is George Stalinski. George, you're on the panel. Please unmute yourself and state your name and precinct number, please.
George Stalinski, Precinct Two. I'd like to commend Molly for a well-thought-out presentation on reusable bags. I think she did a lot of work on this. I see a lot of things that are good in this proposal, and I don't agree on some of the other things. Plastic bags in the grocery stores are one thing, but the newspaper plast, the paper that comes, my morning paper, that comes wrapped in a plastic bag, the dry cleaning that comes wrapped in plastic, the deli stuff that comes in plastic, all these are contributing factors to all this clogging up of the sewers, the drains, the seas, and everything else. So as good as this article is intended, I'm not 100% sure I can vote on it because of all the other items that are not included in this, including the six-pack, the plastic things that hold the soda six-packs that we buy or the beer that we buy. It's a, it's something that I think is, should have gone a little bit further on this. So that's my opinion.
You, George, moving on. Sandra Souza, can we bring in Sandra Souza? Sandra, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Hello, Mr. Moderator. Sandra Souza, Precinct One. I'm 100% in favor of this. I want to thank Molly for bringing this forward. I I just want to state two quick points. When I moved to Stoughton about eleven years ago, I purchased my home with what I call the forest in the back. It's really about a half an acre of a tree lot. And and I love watching the wildlife, and I love having all the trees there. And I routinely pick up plastic bags in particular back there. I'm always amazed at how they get blown all the way through the front and the back of my yard into into the trees, and I have to go pick them up so that none of the animals get into them, and also because they're just so unsightly. I can spot them all the way from the house because of, you know, the white or the yellow, depending on the store they come from. So I'm always finding them back there. So that's just one thing, and I would be very happy to to see them gone. The second is, I've I've been doing this for years, trying not to use the plastic bags in the stores. I've been bringing my own reusable bags. They're, they're either made of cotton, or I have some nylon ones that fold up very small. They're in my glove compartment, they're in the back of my car, and I just bring them into the store with me. It's very easy. It's really not an inconvenience, and it's not a matter of paper or plastic. It's a matter of something else. So either a nylon and cotton bag, and I throw them into the, I bring them in, bring my stuff in, throw them into the laundry, and as someone else said, and they wash and dry, and I've had the same bags for years. So it's really not, it's not a big deal. I think it's time that we get on board like the other towns around us. This is the way to go. We need to be more environmentally conscious. Uh, we need to be more environmentally, uh, conscious about what we're doing, what we're putting into the environment. And I really, really hope that Stoughton does not vote this down because I feel it would be just an embarrassment, um, if we did that. I think we need to, um, show our children especially, um, that we're taking a stand against, um, plastic bags and we need to start somewhere. Thank you.
You're saying, you're moving along, is, uh, next up is Ann Fisk. Can we bring in Ann Fisk? Ann, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Ann Fisk, Precinct Two. Um, I enthusiastically support this article. It is simple, it's effective, and it will reduce plastic waste in our town. I can carry six reusable bags from my wrist to my elbow at one time. I can clean them with common household cleaners and rags. I can wash cloth bags with my laundry. Um, the borderline insignificant inconvenience we might experience totally pales in comparison to the destruction of our environment and our ecosystems and to our health. Over a hundred towns in Massachusetts have this on the books and we all have to be in this together. Small changes help lead to larger things. Please do the right thing. Please support this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Next up is Eric Anderson. Please bring in Eric. And Eric, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Eric Anderson, Precinct Two, also a member of the Finance Committee. I'll start by saying, I appreciate hearing how many supportive comments there have been on this article. Uh, because to be perfectly frank, I have very little optimism, uh, about our ability to keep this planet livable. Um, I don't mean of, obviously I don't mean us as a town meeting. I mean us as a human species. Um, and there are reasons to look at this article and say, uh, well, how will this even matter? Um, as my own precinct chair earlier, George Stalinski said, um, you know, it's this kind of plastic bag, but not that kind of plastic bag. Um, at most it's tinkering at the margins or as Mr. DeMuse said earlier, it's pecking away. Um, and you can ask yourself, how can that even be significant enough to matter? And the fact of the matter is though, that we have to do all of the things. Um, we have to work at the state level and we have to work at the federal level and the global level. And we have to tinker at the margins because the plain fact of the matter is, if we can't see our way to a day-to-day existence without disposable plastic bags, we will never, ever find our way to a future without coal and oil. And if we can't do that, well then that is the ballgame. So I will be voting in favor of this, but I am not at all optimistic and I would love to be proven wrong. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Eric. Moving on, uh, next up is Steve Page. Let's bring in Mr. Page. Steve, when you're brought in, please state your name and precinct number.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Steven Page, Precinct Eight. Would like to move the question.
Okay. Did I hear Cynthia Walsh say second? Okay, Steve, I think we all heard her. Steve Page, uh, made a motion to move the question. That means cutting off debate. Seconded by Cynthia Walsh, Precinct Two. All right, as I mentioned before, uh, even at the result of this vote, I will allow Molly Cochran for a five-minute summary. So first, we're gonna take a vote on cutting off debate. It requires the two-thirds majority. Let's clear the hands. There was about, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, I believe nine people in line to speak. Um, takes two-thirds to cut off debate. So let's clear the hands. All in favor of cutting off debate, debate, please raise your hands now. And the town clerk will take the count. You're good? Okay, can we clear the hands? Clear the hands, please. Clear the hands. Don't raise your hands yet. Please clear your hands. Okay. Clear the hands, clear the hands, clear the hands. All right, all those opposed, please raise your hand now. And the town clerk will take the count on those hands. Okay, clear the hands, clear the hands, clear the hands. All abstaining, please raise your hands now. All right, the town clerk is ready to announce the vote. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. To vote to cut off debate, it, it was yes, 110, no, 3, zero abstentions.
Stephanie, the motion to cut off debate passes by a two-thirds majority. Yes, 110, no, 3, abstention 0. The moderator declares that a vote on cutting off debate. All right, now we're back on Article 12. Molly Cochran, you go to the floor for five minutes for a summary.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all your questions and comments. I understand your questions and comments. Uh, but, uh, you know, my takeaway, and I'll be very brief here, is we're at a plastic pollution's crisis and we're at a climate emergency. And change is inevitable. Change is gonna come. Change is gonna come to our lives in many, many ways because of these, uh, crises that we are facing. Um, I think that it's incumbent upon us, if we want to look our children and grandchildren in the eye, to step up, to step up and see what we can do, uh, personally and, and our own personal consumer choices, uh, what we do, uh, on a state level and what we do on a town level. And of course I want there to be, uh, you know, a proper, uh, laws on a state level and as well as on a national level. But that's not where we're at politically. I'm trying to, trying to meet the moment where it's at and do what we can do, do what we can accomplish in this town, join the other communities and the other states and the many countries around the world who've said, enough is enough, this has to stop, this is a change that has to be made. Yes, it's gonna be frustrating or inconvenient to some people and, and that's unfortunate. But, uh, the change is gonna come, uh, you know, decades ago when this was first, um, brought up, climate change is an issue and most people ignored it. That was unfortunate and I will also say that, uh, apparently scientists were telling us years and years ago that a pandemic, a global pandemic was inevitable. Nobody wanted to believe it. I never even heard about it, but here we are. So let's place reality. Let's, let's listen to science. Let's pay attention to, um, what the environmental organizations and the academics and the scientists are urging, which is that we have to stop our addiction to plastic. And this is a really good place to start. So I'd really appreciate, uh, your, uh, your support of this, of this motion. And then we can look our children and grandchildren in the eye and say, uh, you know, we did our best. Uh, we woke up, we're stepping forward, we're joining the 20th century fight against, uh, these pollution issues. And I just wanted to quote very briefly just on the Boston Globe yesterday, uh, and cut this out. "Plastic will soon eclipse coal as a source of greenhouse gas emissions. Microplastics are found in nearly all living tissue and ecosystems, including human infants." So on that word, thank you for your time and appreciate your support.
All right, thank you for your comments, Molly. All right, at this time, I just want everybody to be aware, I know the hour's late, but we're on Article 12. Uh, the motion is before you. Just take a moment. That's the, uh, the vote will, to amend the town code, adding the article as printed in the warrant below. All right, I think we're ready for the poll. We have the poll. The poll is before you. Please vote accordingly. You have 25 seconds. Thank you. As mentioned before, this is just a simple majority.
Larry, did you vote?
Time has expired. Please close the poll and share the results. And when the town clerk is ready, please provide the, the numbers, please.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On Article 12, yes is 84, no is 44, with zero abstentions.
Stephanie, uh, on Article 12, motion passes. Yes, 84, no, 44, abstention 0. The moderator declares that a vote. All right, so the hour now is 10:55 PM. Juan Fox has his hand up. Who's up for us?
Uh, point of order.
Juan Fox, can you state your name and precinct number, please?
Oh, uh, Juan Fox, Precinct One, uh, point of order. I asked for a reconsideration of, uh, Article 11. Uh, when the, uh, when the, the question was moved, there's a lot of people who were left hanging, including me.
Article 11?
Article 11, yeah. And if, uh, some additional discussion on it may have made the, the resulting, uh, vote a little bit more, uh, decisive and either one way or another. But, uh, the fact that it's 50-50, I think really, uh, cries out for a little bit more discussion.
Well, the fact that it's 50-50 does not cry out for any discussion. But if you want to reconsider that, the hour is late, it's after 10:30. We would need a suspension of the rules because no, no new business should be taken up after 10:30. Uh, do you so make that motion, Mr. Fox?
Yes, I request, uh, that the, uh, uh, the motion, uh, the article be reconsidered.
No, okay. But what I'm asking-
I'll make the motion, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, so the, Mr. Zamanian has made the motion to suspend the rules. Is that correct, Mr. Zamanian?
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct.
It needs a two-thirds vote. Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Just a minute, please. All right, uh, suspension of the rules. Just give me a second. It's not debatable. Needs the two-thirds vote is required. All right, so yep, we're gonna vote by just raising the hands. All right, this is to suspend the rules-
Mr. Moderator, is this just, is Diane Dolle increasing seven? Is this just for Article 11 or is this just to reconsider any article?
Nope, this is just Article 11.
Thank you.
We're suspending the rules for us. Yeah, we're not voting on any articles yet. This is only to suspend the rules. Yeah, this is to suspend the rules for the purpose of reconsidering Article 11.
Okay.
This is- Yes, it's just for Article 11. The motion was to suspend the rules. Correct? That's your motion, Mr. Zamanian? To suspend the rules for the sheer purpose of reconsidering Article 11. That's what my understanding is.
Unless somebody wants to amend it in a friendly manner, yes.
All right. All right. All right, so this is the- Two points for order. All right, we're gonna get bugged on here, but that's okay. For order.
Um, basically, they both want to ask if the speaker is eligible to request reconsider-
Oh, good point, good point. I don't know. We can try to see that. Yeah, um, let me, let me ask, uh, Mr. Fox. I should have asked that in the beginning. Gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, hold on. Mr. Fox, Juan Fox? Can we bring in Mr. Fox? Okay, Juan, could you tell us how you voted on Article 11?
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Judo?
The, the motion before us is not on the article itself. It's only to suspend the rules.
Okay, you're correct. You're correct. You're correct.
Wait a minute, Mr. Moderator. The, the man who made the motion said it was to reconsider Article 11 specifically, not just to suspend the rules. That was the motion, to suspend the rules-
Everybody, hold on a minute. Hold on.
Mr. Moderator, I made the motion. Can I verify that? I'm just, I made a motion to suspend the rules, which is the first thing we have to do. To reconsider Article 11. Correct.
I'll counsel way in just to clarify that, just so everybody hears you.
Did anybody record that, uh, motion?
Um, thank you through you, um, Mr. Moderator. So, um, there's a rule procedure here that the meeting will not take up new business after 10:30. Um, Mr. Fox has stated his intention to bring a motion for reconsideration as to Article 11. And there has been a motion to suspend the rules to allow that motion to be made. Um, we are not just generally suspending the rules, in my opinion. We are only voting to suspend the rules for the purpose of reconsidering Article 11. Um, to you, Mr. Moderator, I would say that, um, because we would be suspending the rules for purposes of reconsideration, it would be prudent for you to find out if the person who intends to move for reconsideration is qualified to do so. Otherwise, the motion to suspend the rules is, is futile. Um, there would be no reason to suspend the rules if the person who wants to move reconsideration voted on, um, did not vote on the prevailing side. But that's up to you. You can vote this without making that inquiry and then make it after the fact if it passes.
Okay. Mr. Fox, I'd like to know if you, how you voted on Article 11 so we won't be futile and wasting our time in suspending the rules.
I voted yes on the article.
Okay, so you did vote. Don't forget, we're gonna double check.
I voted yes.
Not gonna do it tonight. All right, I take your word for it as a town meeting rep. Not a problem. Uh, but I just informed the prevailing side was, it failed, so it was no. It's 50-50. You still, it failed. Prevailing side is no. So, um, Mr. Fox, you, it, there's no reason to reconsider it. You don't, you don't, uh, meet the test to reconsider.
Uh, party's over.
I'm having a little hard time understanding that one.
Mr. Moderator, should I withdraw my motion to suspend the rules?
Yes.
Then I withdraw my motion, Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Moderator, I would make a motion to adjourn a closer-
You have to dissolve.
Oh, Mr. Moderator, I, I have a, um, point of information.
Who's, who's asking?
Uh, this Diane Dolle increasing seven. Article 12 was a bylaw change. Should that have not been a two-thirds vote?
Well, usually we do have a two-thirds vote, but I asked town council, what do you think, town council? Did it pass by two-thirds?
In my estimation, it did not.
Well, let's hear from town council. We have an attorney here. Wait, uh, just a moment, please. We're just having a, here. Stand by, please.
I know. Hello, Bob. This is Molly.
One sec, Molly. Once, everybody just hold on, we're just having some technical issues. We are jumping around. My, look, oh, okay, hang on. First of all, okay, Article 11, reconsideration is now over for Article 11.
Mr. Moderator, I withdrew my motion to suspend the rules for Article 11 as Mr. Fox was not on the prevailing side.
Yeah, correct.
So that, that's done. Diane's asking a separate question-
Separate question on Article 12. Was it a bylaw change as?
Uh, through you, Mr. Moderator. So under the-
Everybody, please be quiet. Mute your microphones. We're gonna hear- So, sorry. Everybody mute themselves. Yep, everybody mute themselves, please. We'll hear from town council. Thank you. Town council?
Thank you through you, Mr. Moderator. So under the Massachusetts general laws, um, a, a general bylaw amendment requires a majority vote and a zoning bylaw amendment requires two-thirds. This is not a zoning bylaw amendment. Um, so unless there's something in the Stoughton Town Charter that requires, um, two-thirds vote for general bylaws, um, which I am not aware of, this, um, Article 12 passed by simple majority, in my opinion.
All right. Thank you very much. That's right from town council. Okay, you had a, you had a motion that you wanted to make? You have to unmute yourself, Karen.
I'd like to make a motion that would resolve the special town meeting. Second!
Did I hear a second? I believe I heard a second. Motion is made by Karen Clip to dissolve the special town meeting in December 2021. Seconded by Cynthia Walsh. All right, we're just do a raised hand. Clear the hands. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And the town clerk will take a, a count. Are we good to count?
Yes.
Please lower the hands. This is just a simple majority, obviously. We lowered the hands. All those opposed? All those opposed, raise your hand. And do we have a count?
Yes.
Clear the hands. And we'll just take extensions for the record. All those abstaining, please raise your hand. Okay, when the town clerk is ready. I think there's one up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. On the motion to dissolve special town meeting, yes, one-oh-eight, no, three, zero abstentions.
Motion passes to dissolve the special town meeting. One-oh-eight, yes, three, no, zero abstentions. I want to thank everybody for your participation. I'd like to thank town clerk, Stephanie Carrara, town council, Greg Corbo, deputy town moderator, Richard Fitzgerald, Carolyn, and I'd also like to thank Carolyn Campbell, Mark Zamanian, Trish Strothshire from IT Department, Matt Cuchon, and Tyler Kenny, assistant with tech support, Cynthia Walsh, Phyllis Kelleher for coming into town hall, Kelly Johnson and Samantha Regal from town clerk's office for their assistance. And I'd like to thank the town residents for watching us. And also, again, the town meeting reps for participating in our town government, the essence of democracy. Thank you all. Have a good evening and good night.